Welcome to the January 5th, 2021 Board of Commissioner meetings. Please silence your cell phone, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. If you would like to speak on any item today, please fill out a speaker request form. It's at the back of the chambers here on the bookcases. And Ms. Holly, to the left of our dais, will take your speaker request forms and hand them to the chair or the vice chair today. So please do that if you'd like to speak. First, we'll have a moment of silent reflection. And our new, one of our new members, we'll have Commissioner members, Travis Lassiter, say the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll do the oath of office for Mr. Lloyd LaCroy, Commissioner LaCroy, and Commissioner Lassiter. Oath of office first by Mayor Ellender for Commissioner LaCroy, and then Janet Saler will be doing Commissioner Travis Lassiter's oath of office. Lloyd, would you like to go to the podium?
Yeah.
Okay, sir. Congratulations, Lloyd.
Okay, Lloyd, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Lloyd LaCroy.
I, Lloyd LaCroy.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
I solemnly swear to support the Constitution.
of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
of the United States and the State of South Dakota.
and that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
and to the best of my ability.
best of my ability.
discharge all the duties of said office of Pennington County Commissioner, District Two.
discharge. Okay.
Discharge.
discharge all the duties of my said office of Pennington County Commissioner.
District Two.
District Two.
and render a true account of all money.
render a true account of all money.
credits.
credits.
accounts.
accounts.
and property of any kind that shall come into my hands.
property of any kind that comes in my hands.
as such officer.
as such officer.
and pay over and deliver the same according to law.
pay over and deliver the same according to law.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, Steve.
Congratulations. Good job, Lloyd. Travis, you can go down to the podium. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, sir. Janet Saler, our Treasurer, and Travis Lassiter, our newly appointed Commissioner. You need a bigger family. Raise your right hand. I, Travis Lassiter.
I, Travis Lassiter.
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
solemnly swear that I will protect the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
and that I will faithfully and impartially.
and that I will faithfully and impartially.
and to the best of my ability discharge all the duties of my said office.
and to the best of my ability discharge.
all the duties.
all the duties.
of my said office.
of my said office.
of Pennington County Commissioner.
of Pennington County Commissioner.
District Four.
District Four.
and render a true account of all money.
and render a true account of all money.
credits, accounts, and property of any kind.
credits, accounts, and property of any kind.
that shall come into my hands as such officer.
that shall come into my hands as such officer.
and pay over and deliver the same according to law.
and pay over and deliver the same according to law.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And Travis, introduce your family?
Yeah. Out here is my lovely wife, Pam LaCroy, sitting in the middle in the gray. My mom, Jill Peterson, and her husband, Robert Peterson, and Cedric LaCroy, my brothers, my nephew.
Thank you, Lloyd and Travis.
It's my wonderful family, my wife and our four children, so Elizabeth, our oldest, Joseph, then Isaiah, then Naomi, and then Sarah. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next, we'll have the election of officers. First, we need to figure out what method we'd like today. Do we have a motion to either do paper ballot or voice vote today?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we do voice vote.
A motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. First, we'll have a motion to appoint a chair. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Ms. LaCroy.
I'd make a motion to appoint Gary Drews.
Motion by Lloyd.
Second.
and second by Ross Connect for Gary Drews, for our chairman this year. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Do we have a motion for vice chair?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd like to appoint Commissioner Ron Ross Connect as vice chair.
Motion by Drews.
Second.
Second by LaCroy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, if we could have a five-minute break to switch around a little bit. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Lassiter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
I want to thank you for coming, for the swearing in also. I think we have a good team. I appreciate the fact that my colleagues up here chose me to be chairman for this coming year. I'm going to try to treat everybody as fair as I can. And certainly, I know that the commissioners, if I do not do that, they will let me know. So just appreciate your attendance. The first item in the business that we're going to take care of now is to establish the commissioner's salary. Is there a discussion on commissioner's salary? I would ask, Holly, what did we budget for commissioner's salaries for this year?
Commissioners, the amount used in the 2021 budget preparation is $2,000 a month, which would be $24,000 a year. So today's motion, if that is still the will of the board, would be to set the 2021 salary at $923.08 by weekly.
That'd be my, our chairman?
Madam Chair. Commissioner Haddock.
That'd be my motion, sir.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Lloyd.
I have a question for Ms. Holly.
Yes, sir.
Holly, we went through this through the budget process. If I remember right, we budgeted for the employees 1%?
Yes, sir, you did.
And so we kind of, to try and keep up and do equals, I believe that what we're trying to do is the 1% with the commissioner's salary too. So, because if you look back through the history, there's been years where there's nothing, and then all of a sudden, big increases. And I think small incremental keeping up with employees is the appropriate way to go. And so that's why I'm supporting this.
And for full clarification, this increase is not 1%.
No.
It is higher than that. However, the board has been underpaid for a significant amount of time. And in 2021, we are doing a wage study on the elected officials, which will include the Board of Commissioners. So the increase is more than 1% for the Board of Commissioners, but it's an adjustment that needs to be made.
I understand it's not the same percentage.
Right.
Because we salaried were a little bit different.
Right.
We tried to keep the numbers even and so forth, but it's minimal compared to what it's been in the past.
Correct.
And thank you for reminding me that you were doing the wage study for commissioners in surrounding areas. So also, we'll have support and documentation on what it should be and shouldn't be.
Correct. Correct. So next year could be a very different picture.
It could be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
Ms. Hennings, what is that percentage? Is it 1.5?
Uh, 5.26 over last year.
Okay.
But we're talking minuscule dollars here, so the percentage is not relational, in my opinion.
Okay.
So what is? We're going from $1,900 a month to $2,000 a month. So we're talking $100 here. We're not talking significant money.
Yes, ma'am, that was my next question.
Yes.
What was the amount? Thank you.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Yes, sir. I just got on the board, so I don't know if I deserve a pay increase, just, I mean, just from my personality. So while I understand what the board's intention is, and I agree with, you know, doing the wage study and things of that nature, I may keep mine at the current rate, because I don't know if I deserve a pay raise yet, since I haven't done anything here on this particular board.
And that's each commissioner's right to choose anything at the level that's established or below. So that's your choice.
So, Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
So Commissioner Lassiter, you haven't been on this board before.
Well, not as a commissioner.
Right. So you get six committees plus other meetings, and that'll start right away, just to make sure you're on the same page.
Yes, ma'am.
We had a, we had a commissioner before that had no idea, and then came in and went, holy cow. So you're going to be taking a lot of time out of your day and your businesses and stuff, not that I'm trying to discourage you. But is there, Ms. Holly, if I could ask Ms. Holly a question, Chairman?
Yes.
Is there any time that he could pull his salary back up after he might figure out what he has to do for his duties?
Yes. Any commissioner can choose to reduce or go up to the level that the board has set at any point in time.
Okay.
But, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will be busy, Commissioner.
Thanks for looking out for me.
Commissioner Haddock.
And Commissioner Lassiter, when I first came on two years ago, I had thought I had a pretty good idea how much time commitment was going to take. I underestimated that by more than half. And so I assure you, you will be, you will be busy, and whether you can continue to do all your other responsibilities that you have is going to be an interesting challenge.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any public comment relative to the commissioner's salary? Seeing none, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Motion carried with one dissent, one no. Commissioner Lassiter. Review and approve agenda.
Move for approval.
I've got a, I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I would, at this point, I would like to ask for a point of special privilege, and I would like to recognize Representative Tim Goodwin, and ask Tim to come forward and give us maybe a little bit of an idea of what's going to be happening in the upcoming legislative session. Representative Goodwin.
Thank you, Chairman. Get to be the first one, maybe outside of the dais, to call you Chairman. Congratulations, congratulations, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Everybody else that just got reelected and took your oath, I think you got a really good commission. In my, in my district, I have three counties, so I have the privilege of Custer and Fall River County too. So I've been trying to go around to all of them before sessions started, just to see what the hot things were. With the COVID situation, everything, I used to kind of feel what's going to happen. I'm not sure if I'm a feeler or not. But just talking specifically to Pennington County, and my district represents the rural part of Pennington County, not Rapid City, but there's a lot of rural Pennington County. Basically, from 14 miles east of Wall to the Wyoming border, it's 110 miles. And so in there, we got money, and we're going to try to get everybody to have a cell service. And that sounds like, in Rapid City, people don't understand that, but when you leave Rapid City, it doesn't have to go a whole long ways, and you don't have cell service. If we want to bring the state into what we'd like with people moving here, they got to be able to use their cell phone. And so we got three towers going up in the county. Talked to the sheriff, and I guess the governor does have that in our budget, but I guess we're short about 1.3 billion, a million with an M, not a B. And so hopefully, we can get that added in there, and so we can get that. And then the other one is, the huge one is broadband. You know, there's all kinds of places where there's not internet services. All, you know, just, you can go out of town now on Sharon Lake Road 10 miles, and there's no internet service, and they can't get it. There's people buying houses that actually live there, and then they, they didn't realize that when they bought it, so they had to sell it right away, because couldn't do their home business, kids couldn't do their homework, and that kind of stuff. And so anyway, in the governor's budget, there's 200 million, 100 million's matched, so it'd be 100 plus 100. And that's a lot of money, but our goal is to have every place in South Dakota be able to use internet. And so that's a huge endeavor. We get the money appropriate this year. It might take a few years to get everything in place, but if we can have everybody in South Dakota, everybody in rural Pennington County is what you guys are concerned with, have high-speed internet, that would, that would really make an impact on the economy. Because I don't know if you know it or not, I'm sure you heard about it, is everybody wants to move to South Dakota. And with automation we have nowadays, you could stand home and work, you don't have to go to the office, and so why wouldn't you want to live in the beautiful Black Hills instead of in Chicago? And they can do that, but they can't if we don't have internet. So that's a big endeavor on our part. So those who think cellphone, internet. Also, we want to do something with mental health. You know, right now, it's a disaster driving everybody Yankton and back, and just the time and the wear and tear and the stress it puts on the sheriff's office. And the same thing happens in Custer County and Fall River. And so we got to do something with mental health, going all the way to Yankton and back is, is not acceptable. So there's some money for, I don't know what the sheriff, I don't know if you told me the name of the building, I'll call it the mental health building, is that good? Okay. The mental health building, so if I can help you with that. That isn't in the governor's budget yet, so, but we'll see if we can do. Just backing up a bit, we have a lot of money through the COVID. In fact, the state got 1.25 billion, that's with a B. And then individually, through all the different programs, the state got another 3.9 billion with a B. And so a lot of the stuff that we did, we paid forward on. So we should have some money that we can grab, that we paid forward, like on law enforcement and that, that we can use this year. But everything we're doing now is going to be one-time money, because next year, we might be broke, or at least back to normal. And so something like that, I would need to do something with mental health. And then it's on the campus, but School of Mines needs a new building. Tell me the word, Custer Rock.
What's that, Tim?
The building they want, what's it called, the?
That's called School of Mines.
School of Mines.
Metallurgy.
Metallurgy, am I saying that right? I always butcher it. Metallurgy building.
Metallurgy, yes.
Yeah. And the one they have is in bad shape. In the legislature, I always kind of raise heck, because if it says SDSU, buy it, they get whatever they want. But the rest of them, it's a tough fight. And so School of Mines should have some equal building. I mean, I had my grandkids East River, and we were going to go across campus to the Dairy Barn to get an ice cream cone, because I was telling how good the ice cream was there. And I had to go clear out on Highway 14 and go around, because there's so much construction in SDSU, you can't even drive across campus. So I mean, it's time School of Mines gets their building, so. And that's not on the governor's budget either, so we're going to have to fight that one out. But hopefully, we can get that. So that's what I want to talk to you about. If you need anything, in contact me anytime, I'll see what I can do. I represent three counties, but I'm equally with Pennington County as much as I am with Custer and Fall River.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Ross.
I'd like to thank Tim for his service to South Dakota and to the three counties. I think you're doing an excellent job. As I said, I'd like reading your articles that you do in the weekly paper, the Hill City paper, and good luck on that line.
Thank you very much.
Representative Goodwin, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Holly, you're up. Consent calendar.
All right. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 15th, 2020. Approval of the 2021 poll worker salaries as presented by the auditor. Number 10 is to acknowledge the filing of petitions signed by at least 25% of the eligible voters within the proposed district, and to set an election date on the question of the formation of the Pine Cone Avenue Road District to be held on January, or, excuse me, on February 6th, 2021. Number 11 is to schedule a public hearing at 9:15 a.m. on January 19th, 2021, for budget supplement SP 21-001 for the general fund search and rescue budget. Number 12 is to designate the Hill City Prevailor, the Pennington County Current, and the Rapid City Journal as the three official legal newspapers for Pennington County for 2021. Number 13 is to reappoint Mr. John Gloat as the county constable for a two-year term representing Legislative District 33. Number 14 is approval of the chair's signature on the resolution for Firefighter Appreciation Day. Number 15 is approval of the 2021 resolution for the Drug-Free Workplace Act certification for a public entity. Number 16 is approval of the 2021 Humane Society Contract as presented by the sheriff. Number 17 is to designate Wells Fargo Bank of South Dakota and First Interstate Bank as the primary active depositories for 2021 pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 7-20-13 as presented by the treasurer. And finally, number 18 is to acknowledge the Public Depository Liability Quarterly Report as presented by the treasurer.
Thank you, Holly. Are there any members of the public that would like to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar? Are there any commissioners that would like to have items removed?
Chairman, number 14, please.
Number 14 from Commissioner Haddock. I'd also request number 11 be removed. Anything further, Commission? If not, I'd take a motion to accept items 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17, and 18.
That'd be my.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect, and a second from Commissioner Lassiter. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 11, I ask that to be pulled. This is for the general fund for search and rescue. They'd had an auction and collected some dollars from that auction. Those funds were not spent during 2020, so they rolled over into the general fund. And so this hearing for our next meeting is to, is to take that money back out of the general fund and move it over to search and rescue. So I would ask for a motion to approve that also.
Move it.
Second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, a second by Commissioner Haddock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number 14, Commissioner Haddock.
Number 14, if I could bring Jerome Harvey up front. First, to kind of tell a little bit about our fire service board, how many members we have, just a little bit about our fire service board before I read the resolution from our commission.
The. The fire service board is an all-volunteer board, is made up of representatives from four different districts across the county. Each of those districts have two different representatives that are elected by each individual fire department and serves at the pleasure of the commission. It's the way the commission interacts with the fire service in this county. It goes back to 1972, 1973, in that timeframe. And it continues the function, and functions on a monthly basis. They have monthly meetings, and we have a commissioner representative. There's a lot of direct connection back into the commission from that. The fire service board originally set up a series of recognition awards several years ago, and just to recognize the service of the various firefighters from our 21, 22 different fire departments that are in Pennington County proper. Recently, in the past couple of years, our Fire Chiefs Association became active, and they took over not only the midwinter muster, but they also took over the awards, and they had a banquet for awards recognition with the state of emergency. They went to a little different format this year, and last week, they did have a recognition here of the individual nominees that occurred in the room here, and it's just a way of them recognizing their peers. They recognize that people have completed the firefighter course. We currently have over 32 volunteers currently in that course spaced out, the state of emergency in three different locations. All of those people pass their first test. That's a significant time commitment. That's about 80 hours right there out of 140-some hours of training that they take. Those people were recognized, people three years, five years, 15 years, 20 years, 25 years, so on and so forth. All of that gets recognized, and then they have some individual different awards, as far as the Lifetime Achievement Award, the fire dispatcher of the year award, Rookie of the Year, fire officer, and so on and so forth, so.
And Jerome, again, how many firefighters, volunteer firefighters?
We roster in the county right at, on our workers' compensation roster, right on 450, and then with the counties that cover into us, with the other departments, we're right about 525 this year.
Thank you, Jerome. Chairman, I'm going to read the resolution.
Haddock, please.
Bottom line, guys, these, these guys and women, women and men that are in these fire departments, these volunteer fire departments, are all volunteers. So they have other jobs besides being firemen and women. I've been on this board for a while, and what amazing group. Bottom line, we've had a lot of fires the last couple of years, so they've been working pretty hard. And again, when you put that much time in, if you've ever volunteered for anything, they also volunteer to go to classes and to be trained correctly. Great group of men and women, and I'm proud to read this resolution today. This is by our commission. Whereas Pennington County has shown a consistent dedication to providing a safe place to live and prosper in the beautiful Black Hills and grasslands. Whereas the fire service of Pennington County has a long and proud tradition of providing protection against the ravages of structure, wildland, and grassland fires. Whereas the citizens of Pennington County rely on 20 fire departments and 709 career and professionally trained volunteer firefighters to respond to their requests for assistance. Whereas the fire departments rely on the dedication and professionalism of their members to respond to over 27,347 requests for assistance in all kinds of weather between October 1st, 2019 to November 30th, 2020, performing a true public service. Whereas it is most fitting and proper to honor these public servants for their combined 270 years of dedicated service. First, we have 35 years of service Gordon Sable, 30 years Jerry Reichert, 25 years Harry Hilgeman, Dave Humphries, Lawrence Karski, 15 years Robert Akers, Fred Had, James Had, Brian Johnson, Chad Ronis, Janice Shell, 10 years of service Jeremy Dahlman, Todd Graebel, Jason Peters, Tyrus Wilson, hopefully I read that right. Whereas it's most fitting and proper to honor and recognize these public servants for their dedication and commitment to their departments and citizens with the following words. For lifetime achievement, Dan Hodge, North Haynes Volunteer Fire Department. Number two is Fire Officer of the Year, Adam Ninkel, Boxhawther Volunteer Fire Department. Number three, Firefighter of the Year is Cody Hilton, North Haynes Volunteer Fire Department. Dispatcher, our 911 of the year is Shandra Nealan, hopefully I said that right, Pennington County again, 911. Firefighter Rookie of the Year is number five, Amy Carrington, New Underwood Volunteer Fire Department. Be it therefore resolved by the Pennington County Board of Commissioners on behalf of the citizens and the communities, that January 5th, 2020 be declared and affirmed as Firefighter Appreciation Day in Pennington County. And it be further resolved, we dedicate ourselves to follow these firefighters' example in making County, Pennington County Fire Safe, dated this 5th day of January 21st.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner LaCroy.[1778.45]
I'd move for approval.
We got a motion from...
Second.
In a second. Further discussion?
Further follow-up, sir?
Yes, Commissioner La Croix.
I also would like to thank Kevin Tome, who has also been dedicated with the sheriff's office to come to these awards and these events that we have for our volunteer fire service board. He's been very appreciated for many things that he has helped this board with, and Dustin Willett as well. So we have many people in Pennington County, but these two have been to our meetings, they've been to our awards, and they have dedicated themselves to helping our first responders in the fire service. So, thank you again, Kevin and Dustin.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Thank you, Jerome. Commissioner Ross Connect.
I've said this once, and I've said it a number of times, but you just don't really appreciate those volunteers when you live in the county until you have to dial 911. That's when you really, really appreciate seeing those red lights pulling in your front yard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerome.
I've always said that, you know, if you're a volunteer firefighter, you have probably no other hobbies, because it keeps you really, really busy.
(laughing).
Commissioner La Croix.
I'll echo that. I mean, I work with a couple of the volunteer fire departments out in the base, and they work very hard to do it, and they're dedicated for their training with that. And with that, I'd like to give you a round of applause.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second for the approval of item number 14. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And Representative Goodwin, when you grow up to be seven foot tall like Jerome is, then you have to bring your own extension for the microphone.
(laughing).
Thank you. Next item of business that we have is the 2021 Extension Advisory Board appointments. And do we have anybody here that's on this list for the board appointments?
Ms. Pat, yep.
Yep.
Please come on forward. Identify yourself, please.
I'm Matt Odden.
Matt, it's a pleasure.
I'm Patty Brunner.
Patty, we appreciate it. Also, we have others that are on here. We have Dallas Moss and Mark DeSanto to be appointed to the Extension Advisory Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hancock, a second by Commissioner La Croix. Further comments?
Chairman.
Commissioner Hancock.
How many years of service, Ms. Patty?
I lost count.
(laughing) That's what I thought. I lost count.
Ever since I was eight years old. I'll let you figure out how old I am.
Matt?
As far as on the board, I think it's been at least five. And I was a 4-Her as well, so didn't have kids in it too.
So we're seeing generations of people that went through the 4-H programs that actually have become volunteers for these programs, and that tells you how great 4-H is. When I first started here, I had no idea of everything they did. Patty schooled me up real quick. But, very proud of you folks. Very proud of what you do for kids. They always talk about doing programs for kids that will keep them out of trouble, bring them to the next step, show them skills that they're going to need further in life. This program is number one. So, we appreciate all your service.
And thank you for your support.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your commitment.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I just wanted to make the comment also. Devin put me on their board quite a while ago, I think my first year out, and I learned a lot from you guys, and I see the dedication that too you have put into the Extension Board, and I really appreciate that. And I think Mark DeSanto really felt comfortable with you guys, and I think that's going to make it even better. So, kudos to y'all, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for training me.
We do already have a motion to appoint Patty Brunner, Matt Odden, Dallas Moss, and Mark DeSanto to the 21 Extension Advisory Board. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item we have is to appoint Karen McGregor. Karen, would you come forward, please? This is for appointing Karen McGregor to the County Planning Commission. Karen, please identify yourself and give us a little bit of your background.
I'm Karen McGregor. I worked for the county for about 15 years, and I think I have a pretty good background in listening to planning items. I certainly am not an expert, but I look forward to learning. And I know Travis. Congratulations, Chair, and Vice Chair. So, I ran for county commission in the fall, and after the election, the reporter that was covering it asked me, "So are you going to stay involved in Pennington County?" And that's kind of stuck with me, because, yeah, you know, it doesn't make sense to run for an office and then disappear. So, that's why I applied.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Karen.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner La Croix, a second.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Laster. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Karen.
Congratulations.
I guess you're on duty next Monday.
I guess so. We're training you in quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is from the auditor. Cindy's here. Cindy Muller.
Ooh. Already made me tired, Cindy. Just kidding. I haven't done anything yet.
Good morning, Commissioner. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. And yes, before you, we have the hearing on the renewal of the Wine Insider license for Larson's Crooked Creek Resort.
So moved.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hancock, a second by Commissioner La Croix. Further discussion? Is there any public comments in regard to this? Saying none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
And the next person on the agenda is Dustin Willett. And I don't see Dustin in attendance.
In the hall, Ms. Cindy.
You're up, Dustin.
In a conversation and didn't realize.
It's okay. Items from emergency management. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, Board. Dustin Willett, Director of Emergency Management. All things COVID. So, briefly, if I may, so our numbers, we expected a little uptick in the beginning of January. We're seeing a little uptick in the beginning of January. Again, if we go back to those ensemble models, the predictions are that that will peak relatively soon, and those numbers will continue to decline throughout the end of January. So hopefully, this downward, overall downward trend that we've seen, beginning in the mid to end of December, will continue. Hopefully, that trend will continue downward. We certainly will see a little uptick, as we're seeing right now. It's just what the extent of that may be. So that's kind of where we're at, and the state kind of reflects the exact same curve that we're seeing in Pennington County with that. I think our active case numbers right now are back up into the 800s. They were down into the 700s, and obviously they've been as high as over 2,000. Monument Health has in the 30s right now of COVID-19 positive patients, and that's down from a high over 100 back in the early part of December. So, right now, the numbers are better than they had been early in December, mid-December, and hopefully, those numbers continue to trend down. What the spring looks like is anyone's guess in previous pandemics. So if we reach back 100 years to 1918 and look at what that curve did, there was a small curve like we saw in the fall. There was a huge spike in the winter that we saw. And then in the 1918 pandemic, there was also a smaller spike or surge in the spring. Now, the big question for us is, one, they're not synonymous organisms. COVID-19 is not the 1918 flu, so there's not a direct correlation there. And obviously, the main topic for today is we've started our vaccination program. And so, it will be interesting to see what the nationwide vaccination effort does this spring in terms of any resurgence of, you know, the wave of infections across the country or even here locally in Pennington County. Before I dive into, most of the questions I've been fielding over the last week or so have been vaccination-related, so I'll have a small presentation on where we're at with vaccines. Are there any questions outside of vaccination over just general COVID-19 that I could potentially answer for you?
Any questions?
Okay, so the questions that most people have now, as we move into actual vaccinations taking place in Pennington County, you know, everybody has questions. And it's reasonable for folks who have questions. However, I preface all of this with saying, this is a, just like COVID-19 was a novel coronavirus, this vaccination effort is a novel logistical lift. You know, we've never done a vaccination program like this before. So, reaching out to these groups and organizing and the logistics of how we do this is new and novel. And the folks that are tasked with doing it are working frantically to meet the need and the demand in the community, but just cut everybody some slack, because it's a new thing, and they're all trying hard. So, where we're at with that is, there's certainly national guidance on what the priority groups should be. South Dakota largely follows the national guidance with some small tweaks to the state plan. There is an infographic that comes out of the Department of Health that talks about the priority groups for vaccination. So, South Dakota really has broken it into phases, phase one and phase two, and even phase three in the plan. But phase one are for the critical, both patients and workers in South Dakota. So, the phase one, the phase that we're in right now, is broken down into letter subsets, A through Echo, so A, B, C, D, and E. A were frontline healthcare workers and long-term healthcare facility workers. Let me back up a little bit and say, for phase one, for these critical workers and high-risk patients or people in the community, Avera and Sanford were tasked with managing that operation East River, and Monument Health has been tasked with managing that operation West River. So, all of this, with one exception, is being handled West River by Monument Health. The exception is for long-term care facilities. While Monument is certainly doing many long-term care facilities, there's also a national contract, a federal contract with CVS and Walgreens pharmacies. And so, multiple long-term care facilities are getting their vaccinations through a federal contract with Walgreens and CVS pharmacies. But the Walgreens and CVS pharmacies in South Dakota right now are only servicing this contract with long-term care facilities, not the general public or public at large. What that looks like in phase two or phase three remains to be seen. We really don't have any visibility or information on that right now, at least at county level. So for phase one, we've got our frontline healthcare workers, long-term care facility healthcare workers. The B, the Bravo Group, was long-term care residents. So, we're still working on some of those long-term care residents. They're still working on some of the Bs. Currently, right now, as we stand today, we are in the Phase One Charlie, Phase One C, group of people who we're vaccinating right now. So, NC are other healthcare workers, public health workers, emergency medical services, law enforcement, and correctional officers. So, jail, law enforcement, and ambulance service. Now, Jerome, kudos to our fire administration office and Chief Gareth Schmidt from the Rockerville Fire Department, with help from Senator Darlene Duhamel. There was a lot of work done by those individuals to get... So here, here in western South Dakota, and other parts in South Dakota too, but especially here in western South Dakota, our local volunteer fire departments are also fire first responders. They don't do just fire. They also get paged out initially to EMS calls and are usually first on scene and spend a significant amount of time in those homes, in those vehicles, treating initially patients before the ambulance service gets there. Initially, fire department was down in 1G, or 1E, I'm sorry, the lowest level of priority one. And a significant push was made by, again, Gail and Jerome and Senator Duhamel, to get the first responders, the folks that take care of patients, up into 1Charlie. So our fire first responders are now included in that 1Charlie group, which is as it should be and is a good thing. So those, 1Charlie has just started. Literally, the ambulance services, fire departments that I'm personally aware of and have had firsthand conversations with, those appointments start today. So there will be vaccinations starting today with our fire first responders. My understanding, in brief conversation with the sheriff's office, is they're starting the conversation with Monument about how that process is going to work for law enforcement. I talked to Barry briefly. I don't know where Barry's folks across the street are going to land in terms of public health workers or not. But 1C, we're just getting started. The appointments start today. I think the appointments right now are running through the end of January. So I would anticipate this 1Charlie phase to extend through the end of January. The next one is kind of a big one, 1Delta. And these are people with two or more specific underlying medical conditions. People 65 years or older, teachers. So this is a, the Delta group here is a very, very, very big group. Let's see if I have those numbers handy. I think that's about, it's about 35, 40,000 people potentially in that group in Pennington County, just in Pennington County. So, Delta is going to be a pretty big lift, and I don't know logistically how Monument is going to approach that yet. There are weekly calls with all the vaccination stakeholders, the Department of Health, Monument Health, the other big healthcare providers. So they get together every week and talk. I'm a fly on the wall. I listen to that conversation, just to try to keep my finger on the pulse of what's happening. And again, that Delta group is going to be really, really big, and I'm not sure how they're going to do that yet. Right now, the vaccinations for Pennington County are all basically taking place at one facility. Monument's, because of the storage requirements and the logistics involved in this, right now, all the vaccinations are happening at clinics and facilities owned by Monument Health. They're not going out into the community and doing things, the exception to some of the skilled nursing facilities, but that's, they're a different animal, so to speak. So, that's where we are right now. Time frame is kind of anybody's guess. Again, I would expect 1Charlie to go through the end of January. How long 1Delta is going to take, I truly don't know. Getting to the point where there is enough vaccine and the priority folks have all been taken care of, and it's just a general open to the public, I think it's, I'm going to hedge my bet and say, you know, mid-spring, late spring is probably a good timeframe to think about in terms of when it might be a more publicly available deal. I think it's going to take us another few months certainly to work through the Phase One of the priority groups. We're getting shipments of both, both the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine. People don't have a choice of which one they get. You get whatever they have available and drawn up and mixed when you have your appointment. So, you don't get to choose which one. I know there's been some talk in the national media about half doses, single doses, mixing Moderna and Pfizer for your first and second dose. None of that is currently on the table in South Dakota. None of that's being discussed in South Dakota right now. And I think the FDA just came out pretty strongly and said it's two full doses of the manufacturer that you originally get. So, I think a lot of the talk about the half doses and the single doses has caught fire for a second there, but I don't think that's, that's not something we're talking about, at least in South Dakota right now. Let me see if there's anything I had in my notes else that...
Dustin.
So I think that, yeah, that's everything I have in my initial presentation. Would be happy to stand for further questions.
Quick question. So, I think there's about a 30-day period of time between the first dose and the second dose. Is that kind of a magic number, or does that fluctuate? And how do they, once a person goes in on January 15th and gets their first dose, are they actually then scheduled for the second one? How does that work?
Yep. And so I should have this. So one is 21 days, one is 28 days. And right off the top of my head, I don't remember which is which. I think Pfizer is 21 days, and I think Moderna is 28 days. South Dakota right now, in our protocols, there is a four-day grace period for the second dose. So basically, any time between day 17 and day 21. However, if you end up going longer than 21 days, you don't start the whole thing over again. They just give you the second dose as quickly as possible, and you carry on. But there is a four-day grace period around that second dose. So when you get your initial dose, and this is all right now currently being done by appointment, with the, I think with the threat of severe bodily harm if you don't make your appointment. So, really, they're because of the timeframes involved with thawing the medication or thawing the vaccine, mixing the vaccine, administering the vaccine... So really, they're they're because of the timeframes involved with thawing the medication or thawing the vaccine, mixing the vaccine and administering the vaccine. There's very, very, very little leeway. Once that vaccine is thawed and mixed and ready for administration. Once it's mixed, the Pfizer vaccine has to be administered within six hours and the Moderna has to be administered within twelve hours. Once it's been thawed and mixed and and ready to to inject, you can't refreeze it at that point. It has to be used within that six or twelve hours. So they are very, very, very strongly wording there, when you make an appointment, come heck or high water, you show up for that appointment and get your your vaccination. So when you get your vaccination, you'll get a, everything is certainly being entered into multiple systems, both at the state level, federal level, to track this. You will get a a paper card, a physical appointment card on on when and where you get your second dose. Everybody gets that. And then everybody is strongly encouraged. Not everybody has the technology available to them and that's that's why everybody gets a paper card. But there is a, what's the name of the system? V, V track? I apologize, I thought I had that right in front of me. There is a virtual system, a a it starts, it's a letter V and then. I think it's V track, but I'll have to I'll have to to confirm that. There's an online system that you subscribe to on the on the computer, via cell phone, what 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 have you. But you you subscribe to this free service and it allows you, one, it will remind you, it allows you some feedback. So there is a there is a app that is designed to help remind you and help work through that that interim process between your first and second dose. And if you don't have access to that kind of technology, it's a paper card that says this is when you show up again, this is your next appointment. That's made at the time that you get your initial vaccine.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Justin, Dustin, the other day I drove by the our former La Crosse Street facility. Do you know if they're just doing the testing or are they administering the vaccine there?
So recently, the last couple of weeks has just been testing. So. The tribes in South Dakota, IHS, have a separate contract and agreement with with the federal government and the vaccine distribution. So the state certainly has offered assistance, but the shipments of vaccine that come to the state are not then being shipped to the tribes. The tribes are getting their own shipments of vaccine and managing that internally. And I don't know, I I don't have current good visibility into what that what that process looks like right now or where they're doing it. I can say the La Crosse Street facility last week was testing.
Okay, I just saw some signage and I just wondered if they were actually.
They were, yeah, it was it was free testing.
Thank you.
And they have, I'm sorry, Chairman, they have started vaccinating people. We had a lady at Bingo last night from the tribe that got the vaccine already.
Yeah, I know the healthcare workers, so the at Oliate. I know that the the nurses and the doctors absolutely have been vaccinated internally. I don't, yeah, I don't know what their what their public outreach is yet.
Just to follow up, and the and the elders, this was one of the elders that had vaccines.
Mr. Chairman. I have a question.
Commissioner Haddock.
So how many vaccine doses are here in the state of South Dakota right now, do we know?
So the data that I have is as of the twenty-eighth. So the report was on the twenty-ninth, so it's about five days, five days old. But as of five days ago, there were fourteen thousand seven hundred, I think, or fourteen thousand five hundred individuals that had been vaccinated in South Dakota. About even, well, it wasn't evenly split. I think about nine thousand of those have the the Pfizer, first dose Pfizer. And I think the remaining five or six thousand have their first dose of of Moderna. But as of the twenty-eighth, which is the last data set that I have, it was about fourteen thousand five hundred folks in South Dakota.
Okay, thank you.
Dustin, a quick question on those that have experienced COVID already. Do they just remain, you know, when it gets to that point in time where it's like sixty-five and older? Do they remain in line like they would there? Or do those that have already experienced COVID, are they asked to wait until the end of it or not?
So there is CDC guidance on that. I apologize, I don't know if the state has adopted that guidance or if the state has decided to do something different. I can say that the CDC guidance is because we still have a very, very limited understanding of what reinfection looks like and what has to happen for reinfection. Right now, the recommendation is even if you have had COVID-19, that you get the vaccination when it's available to you. So that's a CDC recommendation. I don't think I've seen that necessarily echoed in the state literature yet, but I I don't think I've seen it contradicted in the state literature.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of Dustin? Any other items, Dustin?
Not COVID-related. We still wait, you know, the other thing my office is doing is is tracking, I I think locally, at least with local government, Pennington County government. We're relatively okay, but the fallout from the the massive cyber breach still. Just the tip of the iceberg is visible on that right now and the tip of the iceberg is pretty ugly. So so knowing what what remains to be discovered on on that nationwide, worldwide cyber breach still has our attention.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Commissioner Haddock.
So tell me a little bit more about the cyber breach. I did watch a show on cyber technology and it was the new warfare of the the future. And it's not usually the bombs or anything, it's actually cyber war, how people are supposed to kind of combat.
Reader's Digest version, there's a private company, cyber company, FireEye. They broke the news that some of their white hat or or ethical hackers, some of their tools that they use to to do penetration testing and their clients. Were stolen through a a cyber breach. And that was the first tip of this iceberg. One of the things that we recommend all the time for for cybersecurity is keep everything patched. Run the latest patches on your software, keep your software up to date. What they found is is through a particular piece of supply chain software, hackers were actually able to. Put some nefarious code Trojan in on a update to this normal software. So people that were updating their software, patching their software the way they were supposed to be. The bad guys actually snuck some bad software into that legitimate patch. So everybody that patched their software like they were supposed to onboarded this 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 piece of 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 bad code. The 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 bad things are are they've probably been sitting there for nine-plus months. So undetected for nine months. Some lateral movement in the networks that they infected. Now, they infected a ton of networks, but they were very selective in which ones they actually started engaging with. So they were looking for big fish.
That's government as well.
Government, Microsoft, I mean, big, 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 big players. Right now, everybody's, as bad as it is, everybody's hoping that it's more espionage-related, that they were just mining information. That's really, really, really bad, but we hope it doesn't get any worse. So right now, it looks like it's a massive espionage scheme that targeted and was successful in very, very high-level organizations. Government servers does not appear at this time like anything classified was was compromised. But the problem is, we still just don't know. They were there for a really long time and more and more and more and more stuff comes to light every day. And so it's just a matter of 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 going, holy crap, this was big and bad and we just don't know the extent of it yet. So we're paying attention to see to see where we we end up in in the grand scheme of things.
Oh, can you tell me how you pay attention? I mean, who is it, our IT, is it you, is you working with IT, is it law enforcement, or is all of them?
I am, I I can only imagine our our IT folks are are on the ball. They are, they are good, good folks. Laurie's got a great crew over there. The folks that I, the the conference calls that I participate in are from SISA, the the Cyber Infrastructure Security Agency through DHS. And and I know that that our IT department is is lockstep with them as well. But I I just listen in on on conference calls, participate in conference calls primarily from SISA. And then there's something called MS ISAC, it's an information sharing consortium that deals with with cybersecurity. And again, I I just get bulletins, releases, and conference calls with with an information sharing coalition, the ISAC for for software. So between ISAC and the SISA, the the Cyber Security Information or Infrastructure Security Agency, those are the the groups that I pay attention to just to see what's happening.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dustin, appreciate the update. No action to be taken on that report. Next item up is items from equalization. Shannon Rittberger.
You don't look like Shannon.
Same color of hair.
Those are tied.
Good morning, Commissioners, Gordon Wendell, Deputy Director of Equalization. The first one is for Mandy Moore, tax ID eight hundred eight one four eight. We recommended abatement on that. It was gone as the legal assessment date. We were there on like the twenty-sixth and it was moved to thirty, thirty-first, so. But it was gone on the legal assessment.
This is a mobile home?
Yes, yes.
Move to approve.
Yep, I second.
I've got a, I've got a motion and a second to approve the abatement for Mandy Moore. Further discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and the second one is on behalf of Prairie Acres, tax ID eight hundred seven nine five one, abatement of the month of forty-six fifty. This is one that was abandoned and the mobile home court applied for abandonment title and they moved to the dump, they took it to the dump, so it was gone.
Move approval.
Okay, got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner La Croix for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Gordon.
Thanks, Gordon.
Next item we have, Joe Miller, Highway Department.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. First up in front of you is an agreement that you've seen before on the, I believe it was the seventeenth of November, minus Mr. Lassiter. This is a an agreement between us, the state and the city for lights that were constructed along Longview during a Highway Forty-four project that the state did. Basically, when you guys signed it, I got to the state and their legal department wanted to change some of the the wording in it. Basically, the state wants to retain ownership of those lights, but they're putting the maintenance and repair on to the community.
A move approval.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner La Croix for the discussion. Comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next up is another thing that you've seen before, a resolution for a big grant process. We failed to actually put this bridge on the first resolution, so we're coming back to you with this resolution so we can apply for the big grant. We've submitted the the application to the state without this resolution, so we're we're here in front of you to get this resolution signed, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Roskin. A second by Commissioner Haddock. Question, Joe, what is, on the weight restriction, what does twenty dash thirty-three mean?
So what that means is it's a twenty for a dump truck type vehicle, right? Twenty, first one's, yeah, I believe it's first one is twenty for like a dump truck type vehicle and the thirty-three is for a combination vehicle. So a truck and trailer.
Okay, so we're talking twenty thousand?
Twenty, twenty tons.
Twenty tons and thirty-three tons.
Correct, so forty thousand pounds or sixty-six thousand pounds combination.
Okay, okay, thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Haddock.
You're okay, I'd just like to thank the committee, did a wonderful job, Holly, Joe, Mr. Drews, he's the chairman, and everybody that participated in that, Mark. And did a wonderful job and now we're moving forward and we can get more bridges and roads done thanks to this committee. It was a huge undertaking trying to figure out how to move forward with this and we went through it and now we're using this. And hopefully, we get those big funds and get more Pennington County taken care of.
Yeah, it sounds like we've already started collecting the wheel tax in November, December. I don't know if Mr. Drews has those figures.
I do, I do, and I'll share those. In November, this is for those that were renewing tags or registrations that were actually effective for January, but they were doing it back in November. We had a collection of nearly seventy-three hundred dollars for the wheel tax in November. December, that amount was thirty-one five.
Awesome. Going to make a big difference on our roads and bridges this year and we appreciate you all your work.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner Roskin. A second by Commissioner Haddock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Might as well stay up here, Joe.
Yeah, I think what this is, we've got a item number twenty-five is a request for a variance to ordinance fourteen and approval of second approach. Mr. Chauncey Phillips has requested this.
I don't know if he's in the audience or. Yeah. Okay, and I'll let Mark speak on this, he handles the approach permits in our office, so I'll let him speak on this.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Phillips, identify yourself and.
Chauncey Phillips. I was just asking for your permission for an additional approach to my property. We bought forty acres and we're building a house on corner, on the couple acres in the corner. I was wanting to lease the remaining acres out to a cattle operation. I'd like them to have access to it without coming through our primary driveway. We also have a trucking company and with, we have doubles and triples and another approach would make it a lot easier for me to get around on our property.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddock.
I'd like to move approval, we do have, okay, I'll talk after, I'll move approval.
I've got a motion to approve and a second from Commissioner La Croix. Comments?
I'd just like to have a follow-up of, I did read that the highway department was in favor of this, it was one of those that they actually were in favor of and that's why I moved it forward.
Come ahead, come ahead, Mark. Come ahead, Mark, and tell us the reason the Iowa department would be would be supportive of this.
Mark Shuck, Pennington County Highway. Just ordinance fourteen limits the number of approaches to one for residents as stated. State law does allow for exceptions for agriculture, business, some other issues. It's kind of a gray area in the statutes, but since this property was just under forty acres, it does not quite meet the egg status. We we felt that we probably did not have that authority in our our department. And typically, while our department, you know, generally doesn't support ordinance or variance to ordinance fourteen in this case. Well, simply because a limiting of approaches on any roadway increases the the safety or reduces crash hazards, I should put it that way. But in this case, one sixty-fourth Avenue, the ADT, average daily traffic count is only forty-eight vehicles a day. It's a pretty, it's a rural location, so a speed limit being fifty, people are driving forty-six point four on the eighty-fifth percentile. So we really don't feel that in this situation, in this location, that it's adding much of a safety issue to the road. So we, the department, highway department would not oppose a second approach in this location.
Okay, any questions of Mark? Thank you, Mark. Any further questions of Mr. Phillips? I've got a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Chauncey.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for being here today.
Next item we have is from Human Resources, Sandy Sortland. And I think, is John on audio also here?
No, he was unavailable today.
Okay, thank you.
We have four positions that are new job titles with new DBM ratings. The first one is with equalization, it's an accountant two, it's a new position. It would be rated at a B twenty-four, which is twenty-two eighty an hour for a base. The second one is with the Public Defender's Office, they have a caseworker position, it's a new title. It was assigned as a grade fourteen with twenty thirty-eight an hour. The new DBM rating would be a B twenty-one or sixteen forty-two at base. Again, that's just the base entry level. The next position is the Correctional Officer One, this is an update. It was originally assigned a DBM rating of a B twenty-three. The sheriff's office went back and updated the job description for us, it is now, we would request it be rated at a B twenty-four, which is twenty-two eighty. This would put it at the same level as a deputy sheriff one, because they frequently will post at the same time for both positions or they will flip-flop from correctional officer to a deputy. And then finally, with the state's attorney's office, a senior paralegal. And then finally, with the State's Attorney's Office, a senior paralegal position. This is a new title. It would be assigned a DBM rating of a B 25 or 2574. Uh, we are moving, we would like you to make a motion to approve all of these at once rather than individually.
Chairman, if I could?
Commissioner Hancock.
If we could approve them separately, because I have a question on a couple of them.
We certainly can.
Thank you, sir.
Let's take item number one, which is the Department of Equalization, Accountant Two, Commissioner Hancock.
Oh.
Is that one of them that you want to?
Um, actually, the caseworker and the paralegal.
Okay.
The, the question actually is for Ms. Sandy. It's, so you have on the, um, Correctional Officer and the equalization, you have to approve the position title and to approve pay grade, um, rating on those two, right?
Yes.
Is the, um, State's Attorneys and the Public Defenders, are those, it says to seeking to approve and add a position with assigned pay rating?
Yes.
Have those two already been approved for, uh, 2020's, uh, FUE approval or are these new?
Yes.
Yes, they were. These, these, there were people in these positions, but for whatever reason, the job descriptions did not get reviewed with the original, uh, study.
Because I do remember a caseworker and I couldn't remember the other one, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I think Public Defender's Office, Sheriff's Office, and State's Attorney's Office is all, um, position title changes. People are in those current positions.
So Chairman?
Department of Equalization is, is not.
If you'd like to approve them all now, I just had those couple of questions.
Okay, Commissioner La Croix.
I'd move approval of all.
Second.
I've got a commission, I've got a, uh, uh, motion and a second, uh, for approval of all four. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Sandy. Next item.
Uh, the next one is a request for the extension of some of the family's first Corona virus, but Corona Virus Relief Act benefits, excuse me. Basically, we, this was not extended by the federal government. We are asking that Pennington County extend the emergency personal sick leave and extended FMLA just for employees' health concerns, not for family health concerns. Um, we are asking that we extend the 80 hours if someone is quarantining, um, if they have been tested positive. This is not an additional 80 hours. This is just extending the current 80 hours. If someone has already used their 80 hours, they would not get an additional 80. This is just extending for those who need to use it. We are asking for an extension to the 31st of March.
Commissioner Hancock.
Um, just a question, so if they loo, used it last year for 80, they can use it again this year for 80?
No.
No, so once you just used it, no matter what, they've used it.
Yes.
Okay. And some of employees, you meant some of, just because of, it's just for employees and not their families?
Exactly.
It was for their families recovered before?
Um, the Families First Coronavirus Act covered employees and families. We're asking that this extension only be for employees.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Further question, Commissioner La Croix.
That was one of my questions when I was reading through this, was the extension and add. So what, what we're doing is there's no more funding for this. Am I correct?
Correct.
So, policy-wise, you want us to go ahead and approve the, the policy part of it. Where would that funding be coming from? Would it be, would they have to use their sick team, six days finally, or?
No, this would not be using their sick leave. There's, there's still some money at the state level. We're not 100% sure what it's going to look at like for, um, refunding at this point.
Okay, because at some point, what, what was concerning me when I was reading through this, at some point, we got to get back to the norm and?
Yes.
And, you know, I, I do believe our employees have good sick, uh, sick day, uh, acquire, they acquire a good number of sick days that could be used for this purpose and some are saved up. And I, I think that's what we, we plan for. And so I just wanted to express my concern. At some point, uh, we're going to have to get back to normal on this.
Yes, we will.
Sandy, except for the fact that there's no federal dollars that are approved for this at this point in time. Is this the same thing that we did retroactive back in October, November, whenever we did that?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I mean, one more. I just must look at you, you know, I'm going to talk. So, um, cost last year approximately, or the cost maybe this year? It'd be kind of nice to know what we spent last year.
Okay, I can get those figures for you. I don't have them at this time.
Okay. I appreciate that. That might help too, where if it's, you know, if we have to change it out or do something different, because I heard it was minimal for last year.
It was minimal. We had 100 employees that have used it so far, but they didn't use the, not all of them used the full 80 hours.
And for most people, 100 is a lot, but we have at least 800 in Pennington County, so.
Exactly.
Make sure we clarify that, because you say 100 in my business, you'd be like, holy cow. So, thank you, Ms. Sandy.
Okay.
Further questions of Sandy? No further questions. Do I have a, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hancock and a second from I will second.
I'll second that.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, if we could call a break till 10:30?
Can we just recess for 10 minutes, 12 minutes without a motion?
Move to, take a 10-minute recess.
We'll recess till 10:30. Who's the second on that? Ron made the motion. Who's the second?
Go back to, uh, regular session. I had that turned around. Uh, we did need the motion for recessing. We don't need a motion to go back into session, so. Um, but we ended up with a motion, uh, to recess anyway.
Motion to go in the Board of Adjustment?
I've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Thonison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item A is variance 20 dash 18. To exceed the maximum height requirement of 30 feet for six on-premise signs ranging in height from 43 feet to 49 feet and to 55 feet in a highway service district. The applicant is Rosenbaum Signs. The landowner is Rushmore Candy Company. Uh, site location is 9815 South Highway 16. Size of the property is 9.28 acres. It is sloping and flat. Uh, like I said, highway service district, which carries a 30-foot minimum or maximum sign height requirement. Existing use is commercial. Surrounding zoning is highway service district, north, south, east, and west, as well as general agriculture to the west. Staff recommends denial as there is no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Section 312. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, then staff recommends three conditions be included. Staff uses a two-pronged approach to base their recommendations. Uh, prong one is on the screen for you. I believe you also have a handout in your packets. I'll read staff's responses, starting with prong one. Uh, number one, the request does not appear to be a threat of nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, advertising's are, advertising signs are prevalent throughout this area and are permitted, a permitted use within, with an approved sign permit. The requested use appears to conform to the neighborhood. Number three, the zoning ordinance requires a 30-foot maximum height for on-premise signs. Number four is NA. Number five, the signs do not appear to obstruct the vision of motor vehicle operators on South Highway 16. And the second prong, prong two, number one, the topography is flat and sloping. No physical conditions exist that would warrant approval of this request. Here are some ring rings of the proposed signs as provided by the applicant. The building was formerly used as founding father's exhibit, but is now under renewed ownership and use by Rushmore Candy Company. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review and no objections to the requests were received. Again, staff recommends denial as there is no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County Section 312.
Listen, Commissioner Ross Connect, before we start, Commissioner, just a reminder for people in the audience. Uh, we have four variance items coming up before the Board of Adjustment. Uh, if you wish to speak on those, please fill out the speaker request form. It's in the back. Turn those into Holly Hennies, uh, over at, you're right. Other than that, I just want to remind people that when we set as the Board of Adjustment, it requires a supermajority to approve, uh, so we need, uh, four yes votes in order to approve any variance. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Uh, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this first?
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on, on, uh, VA 20 dash 18?
I would simply say I'm from Rosenbaum Signs and I would answer any questions if they were.
Okay. Sir, did you want to speak on?
Is that, that little piece of land bottom of the hill there?
No.
No.
This is about, this is about signs. Okay. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Chair, I would move to approve VA 2018 with three conditions based upon the following findings. I totally agree with Jason on the, uh, first five items that would comprise prong one. The special condition involves an intangible hardship in the form of property rights, more so than a physical hardship. In this particular case, the hardship involves the owner's property rights or loss thereof as the prop, as the owner recently purchased the real estate, which involves the land, the building, site improvements, surface rights, mineral rights, air rights, and the right of enjoyment. By not approving the variance, the owners are not allowed to fully maximize the physical characteristics of the structure. Keep in mind that the physical attributes of the building dictate the size and location of the propos, proposed signs to be seen by means of tourists traveling back and forth between Rapid City and Mount Rushmore on Highway 16. This would be no different from steep terrain dictating the location and size of a garage. Following that, it says, if a special condition exists, does it enforce in the ordinance to create an unnecessary hardship? And I said yes, because the owner cannot maximize the use of the existing structures, thus enkeing their property rights. If a special circumstance exists, does granting the variance observe the ordinance spirit while doing substantial justice? Yes, ordinances are needed to protect the property rights of Pennington County taxpayers. By granting this variance, I suggest property rights have been addressed and substantial justice has been executed.
Second, uh, Commissioner Ross Connect, I'm not going to accept it as a motion since you spoke on it, but I will come back to you for that. Others that wish to speak relative to this. Commissioner Hancock.
No, I'm not looking at you.
I can do it.
Miss?
Bottom line is, on this property, most of the time, these signs, if they're really big, I'm just like, whoa, there's a little rough there. But, um, I like how, um, number one, they're repurposing a building, um, that has, that mean, mean, um, hasn't been well-used. And I think this candy company, when I heard about it, um, coming back from Hill City one day, I thought was pretty amazing, because there's a candy company up by kind of, you could probably tell me on?
Three Forks.
Three Forks. Um, a lot of people, um, I work in doing hair and they talked about that candy company and had to go see it. So I think this is going to be a well-use of the property. I think the signage is going to be key to showing people, not only in Rapid City, but the surrounding area, uh, what this building is. And, uh, because it had a purpose before, it's going to help, uh, economic development in that area and in Pennington County. So I think it's pretty awesome.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff. Commissioner Ross, are there any other signs in the area that are outside of the very, uh, outside of the ordinance? Either extra-large or total, um, anything of that nature? I don't believe we have any other variances in the area for sign height requirements.
Mr. Chair.
Further comments, Commissioner La Croix.
My only comment is, is, thanks, Ron, you did, I had a bunch of stuff written out. Just for the audience's, uh, perspective on this, this is a new process for us and we're, we're working through it. We're used to just going yea or nay. So this is a new process for us and that's why we're working through this. So I agree with, uh, Mr. Ross Connect's, uh, analysis of the first prong. He agrees with the staff reports and I agree with his, uh, second-pronged approach of, of some of the exceptions, so, um, I know this is a process that we have to go through and, and I think us as a commissioner are going to have to work through, uh, that's where I struggled with, with this, is that we're making a motion and, and we're, we're given a report discussion. Where I, I think we got to figure out, uh, to be able to accept the discussion, the talking beforehand and make in lieu of, in lieu of the motion. And so we're working through this, but I, I would definitely go with, uh, what Mr. Ross Connect did.
And I will accept that. I will accept his, as a motion. And I'll accept yours as a second to it.
Chairman, um, I'm, I'm agreeing with Commissioner La Croix, because we have to say all those prong areas and then make the motion, but most of the time, I agree that we shouldn't talk on it and then make the motion. But on this, we're going to have to talk, meaning, um, say the prongs and then make the motion. Then if you have a follow-up that you have more discussion on, then, then it's different, but.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Uh, you know, this form, it makes it kind of, it's a roadmap to coming up with a decision. Sometimes decisions aren't black and white, sometimes they're gray. When they talk about physical constraints, they kind of lead a person to want to go to the site. But in this case, it's really not the site. We know the site's pretty level. The physical restraint would be the structure itself, in my opinion. And that's where the fiscal hardship comes in, not the site itself.
Further discussion? I have a motion and a second. Uh, any, uh, I, I do not have any slips here for public comment relative to this, public speakers on this particular issue. Uh, so I'm going to, uh, uh, call for a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Agenda item B is, uh, variance 20 dash 19, and this is for the same property we previously discussed. Uh, this is to exceed the maximum display area of an onsite or of an on-premise sign from 250 square feet to 516 square feet in a highway service district. Again, the applicant is Rosenbaum Signs. The landowner is Rushmore Candy Company. Again, staff is recommending denial as there's no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County Zoning Ordinance Section 312. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, then staff recommends two conditions be included. Again, we have the prongs here. Uh, prong one determines whether granting the variance runs counter to the public interest. Uh, staff's responses are on the screen. I'll also read them, starting with number one. The request does not appear to be a threat of nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, advertising signs are prevalent throughout this area and are permitted with an approved sign permit. The requested use appears to conform to the neighborhood. Number three, the zoning ordinance requires 250, a 250-square-foot maximum size for an on-premise sign. Number four is not applicable. Number five, the sign does not appear to obstruct the vision of motor vehicle operators on South Highway 16. And prong two determines whether special conditions exist to grant a variance. Uh, staff says no, the topography is flat and sloping. No physical conditions exist that would warrant approval of this request. And again, here are, uh, the signs. Uh, this one in particular is what we're asking the variance for.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hancock.
Jason, um, do you have a picture kind of where that's going to be on that property you have, like here? Isn't that a pretty big sign?
There's a rather large sign.
Is it going, this one going on the building?
This one is going, if you, if you see the building there, it's, uh, right in the middle.
Okay.
Right here.
And which one was the, we are not on the off-prem, is it still on-premise even though it's not on the building? Do we have?
This is considered on-premise, yes.
Yes, but we don't have an off-premise?
We do not have an off-premise sign on there. There were previous sign permits that were approved for an off-prem, or an off-
Okay.
-premise sign, but that's not what's being requested today.
Thank you, sorry.
Chair? Further?
I would move to approve. VA 2019 with the two conditions based upon the following findings, and those findings are big. Uh, they would mirror my findings for the VA 2018.
Second. Got a, uh, motion and a second, uh, further discussion? Again, I do not have any speaker request forms up here for this item. Um, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're now on C.
Apologize, I'm, uh, for this load up. Agenda item C is variance 20 dash 20 to reduce rear yard, rear yard setback from 25 feet to 5 feet. The applicants are Stephen Ashley Luton. The size of the property is 6.67 acres. It is currently zoned limited agriculture, which requires a 25-foot minimum setback. Existing land use is residential. Staff's recommendation is, uh, that we did- Staff's recommendation is that we deny this request. There are no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County zoning ordinance section 312. However, if the board of adjustment disagrees and approves the request, then staff recommends two conditions be included. Again, we have the two prong approach. I'll read staff's responses, beginning with prong one. Number one, the request does not appear to be a threat of nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, residential structures are prevalent throughout this area and are permitted, are a permitted use with an approved building permit. The requested use appears to conform to the neighborhood. Number three, the zoning ordinance requires a 25 foot setback in a limited agricultural district. Number four is not applicable. Number five, the proposed residence does not appear to harm the public or community. Prong two. Number one, the topography is forested and sloping, no physical conditions exist that would warrant approval of this request. The applicants, Stephen Ashley Luton, are requesting a reduced rear yard setback from 25 feet to five feet in order to place a new manufactured home on the property. As you can see on the screen, this is, as the property sits today, there is an existing garage and an existing single wide mobile home as submitted by the applicant. This is their proposed layout. They will be removing the existing single wide mobile home towards the bottom of the screen and placing the proposed manufactured home in purple. And you can see the setbacks are reduced to five feet to support that placement. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review with one comment of concern received from county highway department, and they are opposed to reducing setbacks. They requested that more dimensions should be provided to show if a reduction is even necessary, such as dimensions of the proposed structure and dimensions from the existing structures to the proposed structure and to the property lines. They further state that it's a 6.67 acre lot, so there should be enough area on the property to orientate the house in other ways without needing a reduced setback. And again, staff recommends denial as there's no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County zoning ordinance section 312.
Can you bring up the other picture?
Yep.
Can you bring up the previous picture?
Yes, sir.
There we go.
I have a speaker request form from Stephen and Ashley Luton on this. You want to come forward, Steve?
First of all, one thing.
Just identify yourself, Steve.
What?
Just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Stephen Luton. I'm here with my wife, Ashley Luton. One thing I would like to point out while this picture's up is just to, well, be my left of the trailer are several old growth trees, which to put the new house there would have to be removed. And the highway runs that side almost level with the roof of that house. I really don't want to be that close to the highway, especially at the slope it's at. I know that they said that 6.7 acres should be plenty to reorientate the house, but to move it in the other part where, is there a way to get back to that, the picture of the overlay?
Jason, do you have the front yard setback, what that is, and the side yard setbacks from the road and stuff?
25 feet.
It's our, it is 25 from the road.
Correct.
We have kind of an unfortunate shape to the property. And when the highway came through, it kind of cut this piece off of some original Big Bay property and we came to buy it. The piece that is actually bigger out there would be lower than the existing drain field and far away from our existing utilities, power waters and such, you know, and we've thought hard on this. And this is the best placement on the property for the house and it will be further away from the highway and there's nothing that should bother.
Steve, is that private property behind you or is that?
On the other side of the road, yes, that's all private. So on the, which would be towards the north there, that's all Forest Service.
Okay.
There's no, we don't have any close, close neighbors.
Okay. Commissioner Adka.
So basically, there's no one behind you except on that five foot setback would be, because it's the rear, am I correct?
Yeah.
It's a, it's the, reduce the rear yard setback from 25 to five is Forest Service. There's nobody living there.
No.
And that you've had this surveyed?
There's some existing survey markers from when we bought the house.
Okay, and you know sometimes those surveys are off?
Okay.
Just to make sure you don't get on Forest Service land and then you already know what happens.
Yep.
You have to go through probably a few years of trying to figure that out. So just a word of advice on that survey, make sure it's correct and those pins are haven't moved or anything incorrect because later it might cause you more hardship than what you want.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Can you stay up here just a second?
Stay up here.
Yeah. So based on your testimony, it would appear to me that there's a physical hardship.
Yeah.
And I would certainly, as the commissioner for your district, not deny it, but if anybody's got any questions, I'd be more than happy to make a site visit between now and the 19th of January where we could continue this.
Okay. Further questions?
Commissioner, Roskin, I don't think you need to continue it unless you have an issue.
No, I'm good. I just, I, I'm, I think there's a physical hardship and leaning towards approval.
We have anybody else that has that concern, would consider that.
Anybody need to go see it? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I've got a motion.
Commissioner LaCroy, your motion.
I'd move to approve the variance VA 20-20 with two conditions based upon the following findings. Under the first prong approach that we've just went over with the staff, I agree with the staff. The second prong approach is the special condition, I believe there is a special, a special condition does exist. The special condition that I find that exists is the lot layout, topography, and the forest and sloping is unlimited, and those are my findings. Under question number one, does special condition exist enforcing the ordinance? Does it create unnecessary hardship? And I think it does. I think if I have to remove mold growth trees and so forth, I believe it does. Under the second question for that, a special circumstance exists granting this variance, I think it, there does, I observe the ordinance, this, I believe, observes the ordinance's spirit while doing substantial justice to the property owner, so my, those are my findings.
Got it? I got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Not? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item is D. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, hopefully that loads. Cody Sac, Planning Department. Item D is variance VA 20-21. It's to reduce the minimum required lot size from 40 acres to 2.51 acres and another 2.51 acres in a general agriculture district. The applicant is Shane Swedland. I believe he is online if there are any questions for him. Currently, as the property sits, it's 5.02 acres. Staff is recommending denial. There's no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance sections 205. If the commission disagrees with staff for recommendation, staff has no conditions to include. With variances, we use a two prong approach for prong one. The request is not a blight on the neighborhood and does not appear to be a threat or nuisance. The subject property is zone general agriculture district. The surrounding properties are also zone general agriculture district with a lot sizes under 40 acres with residential uses. Lot sizes in the area range from three to 20 acres. On number three, there was a mistake up on the board. You see that, or in your packet will say a sign for number three, it should say the zoning ordinance for general agriculture district requires a 40 acre lot size. Does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place? No, the current comprehensive plan requires a 10 acre lot size minimum when that goes, when those rezones go into effect. The lot size does not harm the public safety, health, or general welfare of the community. For prong two, whether a special condition exists to grant a variance? No, exceptional nearness, topography, sighting, and like, does not affect zoning or the lot size of a property. However, due to a condition in the layout, layout plan LPL 20-35, it does require a rezone or a lot size variance. Currently, rezones are not being processed as the zoning districts are going through the process of being updated to match the current comprehensive plan. On December 1st, 2020, the Board of Commissioners approved layout plan LPL 20-35 to subdivide the property into two lots. Each of those lots be 2.51 acres and the property is currently vacant of any structures. Request for comment? There was no concerns with the request. But again, staff is recommending denial as there's no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
I understand we have Shane Swedland on the, on video. Shane, would you like to give us your pitch on this?
Sure, yeah, thank you. My, my brother and I, and Shad is also, is also online as well. Purchased a property near Hill City. That's an area where, where I'm from. And, and so my brother and I purchased a property and we're looking at, at that and would, are both interested in at some point putting either a cabin or a smaller home in those, you know, in that area. So based on that, and with there being the two of us, that's where our original request came, is, is because of the lot that was purchased of being just a little over five acres. That's where we started the process of requesting to, to subdivide it into, into two different lots. And part of the requirement is, of course, for the, for the lot size variance, I guess. So, so that, that's our request, is that we would like to, like to do that as we would you're just a general interest of the area and would like to, again, be, be spending some more time back there.
Thank you, Shane. Shane, your brother's name?
My brother's name is Shad and he's, he's on, he's on the call as well.
Shad, would you like to offer anything in addition? I have a feeling your microphone is not on, Shad.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, sure can.
Yeah, I guess I would be, yeah, to reiterate, I guess we're just, we're hoping to take that property and both of us put a cabin or a small home on there and be able to spend some time out there and get out to the hills like that. And so, other than what Shane had just said, I guess we're, we're just kind of hoping that we could both be close, near proximity and, and, and get that, get the, have that land available to both of us, I guess, or whatever. So that's, that's the reason for the, the variance on our side, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
We have a, we have a brother that's about a mile from there, another brother, who's an EMT in, in the area and a teacher and we're, again, looking forward to some, some more family time.
Okay, thank you. I also have a speaker's request from Douglas Williams. Douglas, would you like to come up and identify yourself and tell us your thoughts on this?
Yeah, that, that little piece of property down there, you do know that's, that is a flood plain. And I don't mean a little puddle, I mean a flood plain. And if you put a house on either side, you put it on the west side, you've got to get way up that rocky hill. And any sewers that you run, you're going to run right down to the creek. And Darcy and Jeff that live on that side, just around the corner, they're worried about the, the quality of the water. I live on the east side and up the hill and I'm not worried about the quality of the water. But if somebody puts a house on the east side, you're going to have to give them a variance to put it right on the fence because if they're off that fence very far, they're going to be right in that flood plain and they're going to be taking a canoe across their living room. And any sewer you put in, I don't know how you're going to get it that it won't go right in the creek in that flood plain. And my place is up that real steep hill above it. And all the water, when I have them heavy rains in the spring and summer and the floods, it goes right down there and shoots right across that road and right, right on that property. So, you know, just people that are building there, they need to, they need to know that you can get washed away down there. I got four and a half inches of rain in 15 minutes about five years ago and I thought it was going to take me off the side of the hill. And Darcy and Jeff, their place got flooded real bad and they're way up on the hill away from the creek. But that water come down that creek and, I mean, it spreads out wide and virtually up to the road and it takes a long, long time for it to go down. So, you know, I, I'm not opposed to somebody trying to put a house there, but I just want them to know that it is a flood plain and ain't no joke about it. And I don't know where you can put a, put a house that, it's not really up on a steep hill. It takes a lot of work to get up through those rocks to put roads and everything. And where you put your sewer, I don't know. But anyway, I just, I just hope people that are aware of that, if they're building a place over there. I mean, I don't want to be a bad neighbor and like I say, I just live up the hill, but I sure would not like to see somebody have a little house there and all the water run off my place and through their living room and then I get.
Want to have to save them.
Sue because, because all my water goes down the hill, you know?
Sure.
Anyway, I just want to put my two bits worth in.
Okay, any commission members have questions?
Yes, I got a question. Sir, I, I know that area pretty well and I, I agree with you. And I think today that variance, if they're just trying to plat the property, they're not applying for a building permit or septic system permit. If the time ever came that they wanted to do a building permit, they'd have to do a flood plain development permit and that's a one or two page. And that means they got to, they would have to hire, hire an engineer, an architect to come out there and they'd have to develop, or they'd have to define the base flood elevation. So we don't want people building in flood plains or flood hazard areas. And there is a process if it, if it ever got that far.
Okay, well, like I say, I just.
Well, I totally agree with you though, it's.
I'm not trying to hurt anybody's feelings or prevent anything, I'm just, like you are. You're familiar with the area. There ain't no joke about it being a flood plain.
No.
Commissioner LaCroy.
First of all, I want to thank you for taking time out of your day to come down here and educate the people that are of the property. Since you live there, you're giving them some good insight information on what's going on. You know, I didn't see any anger out of you. You're, you're, you came down, you're concerned of the property and the surrounding people and the people actually who own the property, you're showing concern for that. I appreciate you take the time down, come down and do that for us.
Well, I, they used to belong to my sister-in-law and she died and it went to her son and he sold it. And the first kid that bought it, he got real down because couldn't get all the variances to build houses over there because it was a flood plain. And they didn't tell him of the flood plain when they bought it. And then he sold it. And I don't know whether these other people that bought it were told that it was a flood plain or not. But, you know, I really don't like people getting in a bind because they're in the wrong place. I'm not opposed to anybody putting a house or ten houses down there. Just know that what you're facing when it floods and if those drains can drop a lot of water quick.
Mr. Williams, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd ask if the Swedlands have any further comments they'd like to make following here.
We'd like to ask Williams some more comments.
Okay, we'll bring you back up. Let's ask Swedlands first of all.
Okay, sure. We, you know, the, the people that we bought it from, we were, they were, he actually had some hardships with a, with a divorce. And, and he ended up moving back to Minnesota, so they were able to move forward with their plans. They did have it, they did have it surveyed once and they had the flood plain lines drawn out and it's staked on the land. And we definitely understand and appreciate those concerns about the flood plain area and the side of the creek towards the hill.
And we definitely understand and appreciate those concerns uh about the floodplain area and the the side of the the creek towards the hill. We don't see any possible way that 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 would be realistic. Um between the the creek and the road, though, is is the much higher part of the land that is uh outside of the floodplain according to the survey that was done at that time. He had also had done a perk test uh that uh that went very well uh and and at that time, anyway, uh would would have passed that area, so are those requirements? But um, yeah, so I I appreciate the comments. Uh we would, I I I agree and and I know my brother does as well. We absolutely would not want to put up uh any uh a home uh within a floodplain area. We need to be sure that it meets all the other requirements.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Williams, will you come back up? Commissioner Adcock has a question or two for you.
Just one question for Cody. Is this flood hazard or floodplain? Because you got flood, there is also special flood hazard and that's got to be next to the creek, right?
So so um special flood hazard area, the hundred-year flood is still considered um the hazard area. It's just a hundred year, um I pulled it up on the screen um to show it's just a hundred-year floodplain.
Is it floodplain or
It's not floodway, it's the special flood hazard area, the hundred-year flood.
So they have to build that elevation up, like you said, and they have, and they're both on two and a half acre land or lots?
Uh that's what they're proposing, yes. If you look at the screen, that portion that's outside is where they're proposing where they want to build.
The screen is the floodplain.
The blue, the blue is the floodplain, yep.
Okay, and they're building on each side of that? Is that what
Yeah, so the the lot splits kind of like the line more east to east to west and they'll build on either side, it basically splits that buildable area in half.
Mr. Chair.
So Mr. Williams, if I could do a follow-up, Ron.
Yep, please.
So Mr. Williams, there's a picture up there. So where the trees are
Yeah, that's
is probably where you're talking about where the rocky part is.
Yeah, and it's, and it goes from this to this. I know, because I fenced that place, because I rented it to run my horses over there on that grass on the bottom. But you see that horse trailer and that little red shed and that number nineteen and that, that's my place just above it. And you'll see there to the north, you can see where that wide draw drops all that water out. And then all the water off my place goes right square down that road on the bar ditches on both sides.
It goes towards the creek?
And it dumps right, it goes right, all my water goes right down this road at the house up here on this side.
We can't, we can't see
It goes right across that road.
Hold on just a second, Mr. Williams, you can't see where you're
He's pointing to like right, right in here.
And then this, this creek where that fence is and everything, this is a, it's a whole lot closer right here than you would think. You're not looking at very many feet before you're off in this floodplain.
So the fence is where, Cody? Basically where the right-of-way is?
Yeah, the fence is like right along here. And you're saying that the water comes up more up in here?
Yeah, the water can get, you see that little pile of rock right there and this little rocky spot right there? That's the only high place left. When you get a lot of rain down through there and then the water pouring off my place hits there and bounces over that rocks and comes to the side this way. And the other goes that way, but that's about the only place, if you can get a variance, the only safe place to put a house would be just to the north of that gate and right there. And then hopefully run your sewer along here, not getting any trouble. Or you would have to climb up this hill really high. And then where you could run your sewer from there, but the first kid that bought it, he told me that a guy, he talked to a guy, I don't know, did you, did he ever tell you about it? They, he wanted to put a place over here on this rocky hill.
Right.
But they told him by the time they put a bridge across this creek, built the road up where it wouldn't wash out. And to do all the dirt work would cost him a hundred thousand dollars and he gave sixty for the place. And that's why he was really down. You know, he'd come up and see me and talk about it quite a bit. I told him, I said, kid, you should have known when you, you should have asked, you know, about it being a floodplain. Because he didn't know that he was buying a five acres that were in a floodplain.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Felt really bad for him.
Thank you for your history, it's, that makes a difference for me. Um the other thing is, is where that water's coming, it goes towards the creek. So that road's coming right across, so it's going to hit whatever's in that that path. And we have already dealt with that in the county many times where people are building right where the water actually is supposed to drain.
Yeah, that nine, that nineteen section there is Forest Service to the south of me, but it's in a, in a high bowl up there.
Yes, sir.
All the water, I've had to do dirt work to keep my little place from getting washed off the side of the hill. But it puts all that water down there, well, they've got bar ditches on either side. You get a ton of water, bar ditch, heck, it goes right across that road nine hundred miles an hour and that deep.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Hold on, I got a follow-up, please.
Okay.
And then um, so Cody, this is a layout plan, right? I'm done, Mr. Williams, thanks, thank you for your service, sir, today.
So the layout plan was approved, uh this is a step to go to
Building.
the minor and later on to the final. Um he'd either have to rezone, um which the current comp plan amendment has him as rural residential, which still requires a three-acre lot size. So he'd still either have to request a variance to that or rezone down to low-density residential, which is zero point five acres and request the comp plan amendment.
Can I ask you if there's any other of those areas around there that are getting flooded from that creek? Or having issues with that water coming across that road into that area? Have we had anybody complain about that? Maybe the highway department knows? Because what's happening when we do these things like this, guys, and we approve this and that water comes, um guess who gets to take care of that road and guess who gets to go dig them out and and dig that area out? Once we start building and adding more um actually approaches in there? It'd be Mr. Joe Miller and his group.
Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Mark may be able to speak beyond this history, but uh in nineteen, when we had all the flooding, um the culverts all the way up at the headwaters of this creek on on our portion of the road. I don't know if we got, do you have a rapid map pulled up? Anyways, we had, uh what was it, a fifty-inch or a sixty-inch culvert washout at the end of this road, uh just up to upstream from this. Um and we just replaced, there's three major crossings on this road. Uh we just replaced all those culverts in nineteen. Uh we got those finished, so I can show you.
And Joe, we also, remember when we went out north here even? And the guy changed and put structures in the area. Um he wanted us to go change the culverts so he wouldn't get flooded out because he changed the course of where the water was supposed to be going. And if the water is going across that uh street, basically, that highway um into that property um for future, to me, it just, there's got to be something different. And maybe the layout plan is going to show all that, Brittany, but it'd be kind of nice as commissioners to see kind of what's going to happen beforehand before we get the highway department involved in in water distribution and um cleaning up roads. And then also, I'm worried about that that area is going to get flooded. So when you build on top of that, um nothing, in in my experience, listening to a guy that owned the land and had the land before, and it looks like he's had it for a long time, no offense, sir. It's good to listen to them. It's good to listen to what's going to happen and what's going to happen to um these people if they try to build. My main concern is to do it right. But if the only area is that spot in that floodplain area, that's going to be the high spot, which is actually a drainage area? I think that's going to cause some major issues. And not that um we should let them build and it's going to cost them hundreds of thousands to do it right. I don't know. I I struggle with this a little bit because I want, it's their land and if they want to get flooded out, we should let them, that kind of thing. But I also struggle with us approving this and causing us issues as well later, which we've seen over and over again. Sorry, Joe.
Commissioner Roskinak, you'd ask for
Uh two points, uh on December the first, two thousand twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved the layout plan, LPL twenty thirty-five to subdivide the property into two lots with each proposed to be about two and a half acres in size. So I, when we did that, I think we kind of set a precedence to lead these owners to think that we're going to, there's no sense in trying to subdivide if you can't build on them. Uh the second point would be, yes, there's a lot of floodplain. And I'll go back to what I said before, they do make a, there is a floodplain development permit that you have, you can't, it's not, you if you want to build on that, you can get a permit, you can hire the engineer, you can hire the architect. They can sit there and say, this is what you're going to have to do if you want to build in that shaded blue area to be safe to the neighbors, be safe to yourself. So there are mechanisms and, yes, they cost folks money because an engineer and architect's pretty expensive. But it's not impossible.
Further discussion.
Commissioner Roskinak, or Commissioner, or what's your name, chairman?
Commissioner Hardcock.
Some of this, I mean, the more information, that's why it comes down the line, Commissioner. Once, we also didn't have um one of the people that actually live in the area kind of tell us what was going on at any time. Um like I said, they have to go through the floodplain, they got to go through all these areas. But my main concern is uh what, how it's going to affect the county, not only these people in the future. We don't see this again, do we, Cody?
Uh this you won't, you will see the minor plat, though.
So the minor plat does what again?
So the minor plat is the next step towards getting the final, final plat at regi- for registered deeds. I mean, one of the conditions of the layout plat is that it shows the actual boundaries, surveyed boundaries of the hundred-year floodplain.
But it doesn't have to show to the minor plat where they're putting the houses, the septics and all that?
Um no, but we can request from the applicants that they submit uh a proposed site plan where they plan on putting
So can we um, can we am I trying to continue this until we kind of see where they're wanting to put their stuff and what their plan is? Or is that not what we do? Because I, for me, I don't want to deny it, but I also want to kind of see what what their plan is.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Um just a clarification, a layout plan is just a kind of a
Guesswork.
Well, it is, this is say, hey, this is the issues that come up. If you guys want to do these kinds of things, what what issues are going to arise? Um it's it's a basic request. Um the formal request comes with the minor plat, where you hire the surveyor, where um the the Mylar is created and and those things. So the layout plan is just a, just an informal somewhat request to say, this is what we'd like to do. What issues are going to arise if we do this request? Uh it's a relatively inexpensive process and the point of that process is to to come up with some of these um concerns. Um and that's why it is conditioned that they would have to get a rezone or the lot size variance to do that. Um and and that there's floodplain development requirements um and things like that. So even with the floodplain requirements, you know, they're they're pretty specific. Uh it 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 will depend on what comes out of that, that study and what can really be done.
So basically today, um we're saying, you know, we're going to agree with this and this is what's going to come next for you.
Right, so if you agree with the lot size variance with allowing the two and a half acre lot size in the General Agriculture District, that would move the plating process forward. If you did not agree to that and you did deny or failed um because they didn't get the four affirmative votes, then they would have to come in for the rezone.
So so Commissioner Roskinak is right to plan, to do the layout plan. Let them bring forward some of that extra stuff to see if they have a good plan. Basically, they're not going to affect drainage in a way that's going to flood that road out that basically where they're laying, where they're putting their houses that, and their septics aren't going to be um having issues, um contaminating water. All that stuff's going to come next.
I don't think that's unreasonable, no, as part of that process.
Okay, so just so, just just for me, I think I can move forward. I just want to make sure, Sir Shane and Chad, that at this point you have an understanding um of a man that actually knows the area, which I always, in my account, when I'm buying land, would always ask. And number two, that uh you're going to have a lot of water in that area and and uh you're going to go through a lot more process in order to get these two lots where you need to be uh building on. Just so you know that process as well, to have a clear understanding of that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McRoe.
I'm going to attempt to motion on this, but I'm going to need help from my partner, Mr. Roskinak. You can make a friendly amendment anytime. I'm thinking when we get down to uh the second leg on this. First, I'd move to approve the variance BA twenty dash twenty-one based upon the following findings. Quite frankly, I agree with this uh staff reports on the first prongs, all of those. Second-prong approach, uh this is where I could use Mr. Ruskin's help. Um special condition, I do believe a special condition does exist. And that what the, the condition that it's obvious to me right now is the floodplain limits and 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 lot sizes. And so that's, that's what my findings, the special conditions are. If special condition and conditions exist, enforcing the ordinance uh I I does not create an unnecessary, well, I believe it does create an unnecessary hardship. If a special circumstances exist, granting the variance uh I believe does observe the ordinance's spirit while doing substantial justice. And that would be my motion if there's, unless there's any friendly amendments.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Commissioner Roskinak.
I just want folks to know that this is not a black and white by any means. This is a, uh this is a very hard one, follow those prongs. Uh I think we're doing the best that we can. We were only used to this process for the last four to six weeks, but uh I will go ahead and do the second.
Have a motion and a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried.
Having a hardship.
I struggle with, I'm learning.
Okay, now we're at uh on our regular agenda. Uh we're out of Board of Adjustment.
Move to go out of Board of Adjustment?
Got motions, they're second.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Brittany.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Item E is a vacation of right-of-way VR twenty dash zero one for Murphy Brothers Partnership. It's to vacate a portion of platted public right-of-way along Knuckle Dust Road adjacent to tract F of the northwest quarter. Um this property is located in the Murphy Ranch subdivision. Uh the applicant's agent, surveyor and engineer is in the audience and a representative for the landowner is on Zoom. This applicant is requesting to vacate this portion of right-of-way. As you can see on the screen, this portion of right-of-way um with the proposed plating um that's being done through the city of Rapid City, um that right-of-way is no longer needed. Um so they are looking to relocate that right-of-way to the north and going west along Black Powder Road in lieu of this current right-of-way. They did get the um required number of petition signatures. Those were verified by Lori Saberson, the election supervisor. And they were required to get four hundred and seventeen signatures, which is one percent of the last gubernatorial election. Uh this portion of planted public right-of-way does not connect with any planted future or current existing right-of-way alignments. And so staff finds no significant issue with this applicant's request and is recommending approval of this vacation with two conditions.
Move approval.
I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Uh for the discussion, I'd ask, uh Kelsey, understand you're owner of this?
Uh I'm not owner, representative, yep.
Representative? Uh would would you like to uh give us your information?
Uh I think Brittany pretty much explained it all. It's unneeded that it was platted in the eighties. So we're trying to use that kind of extra area that's going north and south instead of it just being right-of-way, that it would be uh a lot eighteen, as it's shown. Because that road can never go anywhere. If you went south, that land is all owned already, so you can't get to Highway forty-four. already, so you can't get to Highway 44. Then when the right-of-way that goes east-west goes down to Apple Tree Lane, and that road would have to be improved at some point by the county to even have that feasible at all as well.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here in regard to, I don't have any speaker request forms. Anybody else here that wishes to, that's involved with this, that wishes to talk on this matter? Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Back to the Commission. Is there a motion? Move to approve. Got a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second?
Didn't we already have?
We already had a motion.
Okay, we had it from, did we have it from Hattcock and?
Lassiter.
And Lassiter?
Yep.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Item F is vacation of right-of-way VR 20-02 to vacate an eight-foot wide portion of a platted public right-of-way adjacent to tract F. This is also in the Murphy Ranch subdivision. The applicants, again, are online, and the surveyor, engineer, representative is in the audience. This portion of the right-of-way is no longer needed as a new right-of-way alignment is proposed for future development of residential lots in the Murphy Ranch subdivision. This was routed around to the interdepartmental review. One item to note is that the city of Rapid City, who is plating this subdivision, because it's in the three-mile plating jurisdiction, had indicated that the local street requires a minimum 50-foot wide right-of-way. Vacating eight feet of the existing right-of-way as proposed will remain, and the remaining required right-of-way for the street. Right now, there is a 60-foot right-of-way, so they're just asking to vacate eight feet of that 60 feet, as the city only requires 52 feet, and sidewalks will still be installed in this subdivision. This was, the petition was done for this request. Again, it was verified by the Auditor's Department, the election supervisor. This portion of right-of-way is no longer needed, and staff finds no significant issue with the applicant's request and is recommending approval with two conditions.
Move approval.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. G.
Cody Stack, Environmental Planner. Item G is vacation of section line VS 20-01. It's to vacate a section line right-of-way. The applicant is Corey Osborne. This vacating a section line requires signatures from the public. On November 5th, the Auditor's Office, Lori Severson, verified 417 signatures that are required from the public. This was routed around for comment. The highway department is opposed to vacating the section line, and emergency services wants an address posted on Condyke off of Condyke Road whenever they build their house. Currently, the property is vacant. According to the applicant, the section line runs through the property. It reduces the buildable area on the lot. The vacation of this portion of the section line right-of-way will remove the 58-foot section line setback requirement outlined in the Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 204H, for the property described in this request. The section line would not provide adequate means of travel for the public, as there are several other roads in the immediate vicinity. Other than section lines that provides access to public lands, these roads are Condyke, Cosmos, and TP Gulch. So with that, staff does recommend approval of vacation of section line VS 20-01 with two conditions.
Commission, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Got a motion to approve from Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lassiter. Take it. Corey Olson is not here.
I do not believe so, no.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
H. Morning again, Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, Assistant Director. Agenda item H is layout plan LPL 20-42. The applicant, applicants are Tim and Teresa Duda. Other affected landowners are Bruce and Fay Peterson. Agent and surveyor is DC Scott Surveyors. The applicants have requested layout plan 20-42 in order to reconfigure interior lot lines in order to create lot 17R and 23R of Edelweiss Mountain subdivision. I have the current lots on the screen for you on the left and the proposed lots on the right. As it sits today, the three properties are vacant of any structures or utilities. There's no special flood hazard area, and they are zoned suburban residential district. Lot 17 is .76 acres, lot 18 is .62 acres, and lot 23 is 1.23 acres. The proposed lots there on the right also are gonna be vacant of any structures. There's no special flood hazard area on that property, and they'll continue to be zoned suburban residential. Lot 17R will increase to 1.17 acres, and lot 23 will increase to 1.43 acres. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. One comment of concern came back from Department of Equalization. It says that currently two of the properties are deeded under Tim Duda, and one is deeded under Timothy Duda, and they would like to see those deeded into the same name, just to clean up, for the sake of legal clarity, they said. With that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area.
Jason, one second. Jason, is one of the recommendations, I didn't look, to straighten out the name?
Yes, to.
It is?
To straighten that out for equalization. Yes, I did include that as a condition of approval.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Hattcock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Aye. Agenda item I is layout plan LPL 20-43. The applicants are Alvin and Lois Rudd. Other affected landowners are Stanley and Marvin Negabauer. The surveyor was Anderson Engineers. The applicants, Alvin and Lois Rudd, have requested layout plan 20-43 in order to create Rudd tract in lot 8R. This item was heard at the December 21st, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, where the applicants requested that this plan be removed from consideration. With that, the Planning Commission denied this request without prejudice.
That's my motion. That'd be my motion.
I've got a motion by Hattcock. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Lassiter.
Deny without prejudice, sir.
Right, okay. So the motion is to move to deny without prejudice the layout plan following the same action as the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. J.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Item J is ordinance amendment OA 20-07. This is section 200 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. This revision is due to, in order for section 200 to be consistent with our comprehensive plan, U2040, in our comprehensive plan, they had indicated some new zoning districts. So this section 200 will give use-by rights for those zoning districts that are indicated in our U2040 comprehensive plan. Just a couple, I'm just gonna kind of go through the overview of the changes that staff and the state's attorney's office has made in this section. There is only one use-by right per line. Previously, in our section 200, there were multiple uses on the line under the permitted uses, so we just took those out, made one use-by right, and alphabetized them. There are no new use-by rights added, so there's no property rights change under each of the zoning districts. So if you're currently a suburban residential district, the same permitted uses are allowed under the new, or under the proposed section 200. There are a couple of zoning districts that have changed. The ranchette is now a five-acre zoning district minimum. The use-by rights are similar to those that are currently in our limited agriculture district. The rural residential is similar to what our current low-density residential district is, which has a minimum three-acre lot size. The new low-density residential district is a new district, and the uses-by right and setbacks are similar to those in the suburban residential district. However, they do have a .5-acre lot size minimum. The utility substations were moved to industrial zoning districts only. The list of representative conditional uses were removed. If it isn't a use-by right, then it would be a conditional use. So we simplified this section by removing those lists of conditional uses under each zoning district. There was a couple reasons that we did that. There were some indication or some misrepresentation that because they were listed as a conditional use under those districts, that they would automatically be approved. And as you know, with conditional uses, they're similar to variances. There are certain criteria that have to be met in order for those conditional uses to be approved. So instead of having a potential list, we just have the uses-by right, and anything else outside of that will be a request under a conditional use that would be heard by the Planning Commission. We did add several sections, sections F, G, L, M, N, and O. Section F is consistent with our subdivision regulations of the 40 lots on a dead-end road system. Section DG is clarification of only one principal use per lot. That is where you could have one single-family residence per lot, essentially. Section L is, we moved the central water system requirements to a general provision instead of having it in each zoning district. So we shortened the section 200 because it was under each zoning district. Those are dependent on lot size and not zoning district requirements. So in order to have a central water system, a well, things like that are based on lot size and not individual zoning districts. And lot N is the wastewater system requirements. Those are similar to the central water system requirements, where it is a lot size requirement and not necessarily a zoning district requirement. Lot N goes over screening. This was addressed in several sections of 200, but it was never actually defined or addressed.
Brittany, on N, I think you got an extra A in there, too, in that last line. Must provide instead of must A provide.
Okay. We'll strike that one from there. And then in section O, we moved the floodplain requirements to a general provision since it applies to all zoning districts. It was its own section, so we just actually moved it under the 204, under the general district provisions. Overall, we tried to simplify section 200 to be easier for use. So if someone wanted to come in and know what zoning district they were in and what uses that are allowed under each zoning district, it's clear. All of the setbacks, those things did not change. Like I said, we just had to identify the new zoning districts that were identified in our comprehensive plan.
Jim?
Yes, Commissioner Hattcock.
So we talked about this. So like today, we had a variance for 40 acres to 2.51 acres. What would 2.51 acres be then? It's not three acres, but it's not, is it still low density?
It would be the low-density residential under the new zoning district requirements.
Is that like a half acre?
That would be the .5 acre.
Okay, so that would, remember, we were talking about this, if it's 40 acres to .251 acres, that then that would be under LD. So it would go from general agriculture, right, 40 acres to LD, which that way we can look up that it's LD under low-density residential. We also can figure out from a zoning map that it would be LD, meaning yellow, blue, whatever. It's just easier, at least for me, I don't know if the, the rest of the commission, is to know what designation or what zoning it's gonna be when you're going from 40 acres to 2.51, 3.65, whatever. That would be nice in parentheses by the, what the 2.51 is, basically going to.
Correct. Would be the most appropriate zoning district where it meets the minimums?
Yes.
Okay.
That way, we can kind of follow by a comprehensive plan or a, you know, what you guys are, are putting it into, why maybe that might be one of the reasons why we don't want to do it, because it's surrounded by suburban residential, right in the middle of low-density residential. But when you're first learning these, you aren't gonna guess, number one, where 2.51 goes, and number two, in order to learn it, you need to kind of know what it is, or where those acres go.
Make it easier for us to cross-reference when we're looking at.
And just one point of clarification, too. Agriculture with this new zoning districts goes down to 10 acres.
Yes, yes.
Minimums.
And that, we went through this, that the ranchette was limited agriculture was five acres. Am I correct?
Correct.
And then rural residential, which was low-density, is now rural residential, which is three acres.
Correct.
Okay? Low-density residential, new districts, uses-by right and setbacks are similar to half-acre, and, which was suburban, wasn't it?
Suburban residential did not change. So the uses-by right and the name did not change, and the minimum lot size requirements did not change.
So rural residential is three acres, and low-density residential?
Is half an acre.
Yeah. That's gonna be confusing. To suburban residential, which is .5 lot size minimum?
It's 6,500 square feet. So the suburban residential districts are more of what you're gonna see in the Rapid Valley area, and those districts that have community water.
That's smaller than, or 6,500 or lower.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
And then there's the new urban residential, which is, which allows multifamily without any conditional uses. So that's the advantageous of that, the advantage, I guess, of that zoning district, is that you wouldn't have to get conditional uses for apartment buildings or fourplexes and the like.
So that's also why it'd be helpful when you guys, and Jason, you do this, the papers, is to recognize whatever, you're taking something to something or making something that's lower to higher. Putting in print these, it was limited ag, and now it's multi, what is it called? Urban residential. Boy, this is gonna start.
Mr. Chair.
Do I think it's a good thing?
I'm not gonna finish. So the ranchette is, was limited ag, and limited ag was 10 acres of 40?
Right. So now that we just have one agricultural designation, before we had two, we just have one agricultural designation, which is going to be a 10-acre minimum. The ranchette is going to be a five-acre minimum. You're gonna have similar uses, so you can still have animal husbandry, things like that, but you're not gonna have the larger, like the animal feeding operations or sawmills, things like that are still gonna require a minimum 40-acre lot size for consideration. But any of the other uses that were under general ag are under the, just the.
So the parameter for, for size for the ranchette would be five acres to?
Five acres.
Five acres. What's the max for that?
There is no maximum for any of the, for any of the zoning districts. So you can have a 50-acre suburban residential district if you wanted to. It's just because if someone wanted a future, you know, do some future subdivision of that property, they could have that zoning district. So they're only minimums.
So if I had 40 acres in the hills, and I wanted to sit there and plant one lot that would sustain a well and a septic system, that would be a minute, that's still gonna be three acres, right? We want a minimum of three acres?
No, one acre. So to have a well and a septic on a lot is one acre. But that might not support that zoning district. So they're, they're a little separate. That's why we moved that to the general district provisions, because that applies to every zoning district irregardless. So that one-acre minimum is, is not subject to whatever zoning district.
So when you go small enough where you have central water or central sewer, then where, what kind of a zoning are we in?
You're gonna be in the LD, SRD, or urban residential.
.5 acres, okay.
Correct.
Well, I appreciate you and Jason's hard work in doing this. I know a lot of work there. We just gotta catch up with you.
Yes. Don't forget Cullen with the state's attorney's office. He helped quite a bit with this.
Yeah, and Cullen, too.
To do some clarification. We're trying to make our ordinances simpler, so if someone comes in, has a zoning district, they know what they can do. And if it's not on the list, they know it's a conditional use.
Mr. Chair. Further, yes, Commissioner LaCroy.
I'll move for approval.
I've got a motion to approve. Second as well.
Second.
Last one, okay. Got a motion and a second to approve ordinance amendment 20-07. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. K.
Item K is ordinance amendment OA 20-08. This is section 100. There were several definition additions in this section. They are all in your pocket, should be highlighted in yellow to address and define uses-by right in our section 200. These kind of go hand in hand. Just for clarification, no other definitions were changed except for those in yellow. So those are existing definitions in our ordinance. There were a couple changes that were made to bedroom, and I believe there was one that was changed under adult bookstore. There was a requirement removed because the state's attorney's office felt it was a requirement, not part of the definition. And most of these definitions...
And most of these definitions were taking, taken from the American Planning Association's, the Planner's Dictionary. So we use those definitions in determining, in determining what we would use for these definitions. As I said before, a lot of these definitions come from the uses by right that are actually in section two hundred. I'm just going to go, for example, animal husbandry is actually defined. Art gallery, buffer, club, common wall, things like that that were in our ordinance but weren't defined, or actually defined under one hundred. So those are the major changes to this section. And we are going to come back and look at the rest of section one hundred at a later time. We just wanted to get these definitions implemented so they can go along with our section two hundred.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Excuse me, who's the second? Okay.
Nothing, Brittany, I'm good. Sorry.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carried.
A little bit of changes in there, Brittany.
There will be. Yes. Item L is ordinance amendment oh eight twenty dash zero nine, this is section three hundred. This has to do with special animal keeping. Special animal keeping was removed from section two hundred, which is what was under a general district provisions of two oh four G, and it was added as its own section three twenty-two. The current version, the animal keeping committee's version and the staff's proposed version are all included. Staff's version was prepared by the State's Attorney's Office utilizing information and concerns from citizens during the committee meeting. Tina Malali, Vice Chair of the Special Animal Keeping Committee, spoke in support of staff's proposed version at the planning commission meeting on December twenty first, two thousand twenty. The planning commission recommended approval of staff's proposed version, the special animal keeping.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Brittany, we discussed item D on page six, two of six. We were going to change that, or not change that one, but put exception dogs or cats on the top, so people knew that special animal, animal keeping, that no animals should be kept or allowed to run within fifty feet of adjoining residences, that people understand when they read this, their dogs and cats or domesticated animals are different.
Correct, so you wanted to add a, just an exemption that this, this provision excludes domestic animals.
Just a clarification.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And where would that go at?
Probably at the top of the special animal keeping regulations.
Okay.
Further discussion?
So you can't come over and, just kidding.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Or your children, Travis. Can't bring your goat. Can't keep your animals.
Twenty-eight, items from the Commission Manager, Holly.
Say, Brittany?
Yeah.
One second.
We're going to meet on the twelfth. I have the twelfth on my calendar.
Yes.
Your conference room?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Commissioners, this is the time of the annual review of the bylaws of the rules of procedures for the Board of Commissioners. Certainly don't have to make any changes if you're comfortable with the document as is, but you can accept it now. You can continue and review and address at the next meeting, or you don't have to do anything.
I've gone through them, I don't really see anything that needs to be changed in them. Anybody else have anything to?
I don't, I'd move for approval.
I got a motion from Lloyd La Croix to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Posed, motion carried.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Items from Commission Members. That's combined twenty-nine and thirty. Commission Member Reports. Let's go with Ron.
Spent so many days off, I'm kind of forgetting what I did two weeks ago. But I did a Zoom meeting with Rapid City Metropolitan, or Metropolitan Planning Organization, where we discuss projects that are coming down the pipeline relative to bridges and streets and corridors in Mead County, Rapid City, and Pennington County. I had an itemized list, but I did not bring it to this meeting. I attended a Pennington County Housing Redevelopment Meeting in Deb's absence. You know, one of the big concerns is finding housing and affordable housing and, and the way some of these scattered housing units are being treated and affecting neighbors. I did mention, I just, I just mentioned, I said, you know, we got an empty building on the Lamp lighter Motel and if there's any way we could utilize it, not at our expense, something that we, we just, I threw it out there just because that building's sitting empty, it's got some utility, if it can be utilized, but it would have to be legally permissible and at no expense to the county, so. Last meeting was, I guess yesterday, Gary and I met with Shannon and Anna Hayes, who's with Elevate Rapid City. They're just, we're just throwing out for discussion the possibility of doing a discretionary tax program for Pennington County. All we did was just a little fact finding, we'll have a follow-up meeting in about a month. That's all from me.
Okay. Commissioner Adcock.
Ron went to the Pennington County Housing Development. My schedule has been crazy, so I'm not going to say that I, I usually go to meetings, but I have missed a few. That was one, and thank you, Ron, for going to Penning County Housing Development. They did hire a new guy, if I'm correct. He should start, his name's Brian Akbok, should start January fifteenth. NPO, executive policy, did you go to that, Ron?
Yep.
Okay. And then Ellsworth Task Force, they are disband the task force, but they're still having the authority. They're going to do a three, three tier prong on their Ellsworth Development Authority. Asked them, they had lots of people on those three tier committees and no county people. So I asked them why they didn't have us on there and they said they forgot, so. Anyway, there's going to be another meeting, I'm going to try to make that one, it's the eleventh, if I'm correct, Holly. Try to make that and stay for that half a day just to get updated because I can't tell someone, you didn't put us on the committee and then nobody shows up, so. Let's see if they move forward because there's some huge things in Box Elder that we have helped with and finding that other people are taking that credit for it. And it's not always about the credit, but when Pennington County does stuff, it seems like other people are taking that credit. I heard how much Rapid City has helped Box Elder. Well, we just did two TIFs for Box Elder, twenty-five million that they're going to do. We're giving them a ten point something on that and then another one for the Bradskys. Those were huge. And then Joe is working with them on some of their highway areas and Pennington County is, is making a difference in Box Elder. We're making a difference in Hill City, thanks to Ron. We are making a difference in Keystone, working with Quinn. Sometimes, some of the others, I'm going to be up straight, some of the others, Elevate and Ellsworth Authority and others, they knew about this TIF a year before, Ellsworth Authority did. Anybody else that this twenty-five million dollar project was coming? They want us to be a part of something, these groups, but then they tell us at the end, when it's like they came to the last resort for their TIF and we decided that it was going to be Pennington County. Now Box Elder has been very kind to us and they have gave us credit, so has Hill City, so has the other entities. But some of the other people that are, actually have funding sources and different things that actually could move us forward, I think we can do better, so that's my bottom line. I don't begrudge them in a sense, but the other, give credit where credit was due. We love our cities in Pennington County, we take care of our cities very well. And I just want us to be shown that we have been at the table over and over again at these entities and that we are making a difference. So it doesn't matter to me because this team in Pennington County is amazing, this commission, and what we do here. So that's my only begrudgment on that. I'd, I'd like our team, not us personally as commissioners, but our team to be recognized in how much work we do economically and for Ellsworth. Then what other, go into any other meetings? And then, of course, we're doing the crisis stabilization, we did a unit, we're talking to Kevin about that. That's going to be huge, Berry and our legislatures, that will be connected kind of to a mental health issue that we have in western South Dakota. And then a tower that we want to build, you heard about both those things, that's going to be huge, that radio tower for communications for our first responders and hopefully anything to do with the internet that we can put on those poles, VAST or any other, Midco, because we already know, if the goal is from the governor, it has been and has told us, the big goal is to make sure that we have that internet and that technology in South Dakota. That's going to be huge for bringing economic development for our county, let alone our state. So it's going to be huge that we start this process and we be a part of this process. Because a lot of that, most people won't move in our county, and you heard it from Mr. Goodwin, they won't move in our county unless we have that technology because they can't run businesses and things outside of certain areas, so. It's going to be huge, anyway.
Thank you, Dave. Commissioner La Croix.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the, one of the means I had was Health and Human Services and we didn't have enough for our quorum, so we eventually ended up doing the meeting by email. It was a pretty short agenda, just quality control, improvements where they assess what's happening in the health, our community health as far as services and so forth and, and reports they get back. And then we also did the election of officers for twenty twenty-one, which we pretty much kept the same. And that was pretty minimal, it's been a pretty quiet month with the holidays in there. One thing I did want to kind of go over a little bit is everybody's gotten this report from the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge. And this is up to November, I just wanted to bring out, highlight some stuff that's on there. One of the things that they work on is the warrant resolutions. You know, if you look underneath that, they, they resolved one thousand two hundred and forty-four warrants by outreach, I mean, that's, that's amazing, that keeps people, frees up our jails and helps the community out better with that. And they did that through two hundred and sixty-eight, through warrants from the hotline that they have call in and through outreach. I'm not, you guys all have this, one of the things that highlight to me is our care campus. Fifty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-two intakes to the care campus through, through November. Thirty-eight thousand four hundred and two intakes to Safe Solutions, through Safe Solutions, two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven clients, fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy referrals by law enforcement. And then we had other, sixteen three, sixteen three percent were system diversions through different organizations. One of the other things that I like to highlight is the State's Attorney's Office diversion programs. You know, they had nine hundred and ninety-two people referred to young adult diversion, nine hundred and ninety-two, that's good. If you think about that. A hundred and thirty-six people referred to the adult diversion. Four hundred and nineteen people referred to the drug diversion and sixty people referred to the DV diversion. So I mean, those are some of the numbers, sometimes we get these and we just kind of glance at them, but to really go over these numbers, they're actually, that's pretty amazing for what we are doing here in this community. I just wanted to highlight a few of those, if anybody else.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
I agree with Lloyd, what I like to do is get three months on roll and then you can, and then look at the changes because then you can, then you can see what direction you're going. And the direction I'm seeing right now, it's positive, so that's positive.
Yeah, and these are total numbers for the year and Liz does a really good job of putting these together and so forth. She could definitely, you shoot her an email, you want three months still, she could break it out for you in that way. You know, there's been a lot of changes, you know, I didn't go through the jail review team, how they review. Some things forget my mind right quick, when they do the assessment, needs assessment right at the beginning, so there's diversion program there. There's some amazing things that we're doing to keep people out. It's not all just COVID, like people are talking about where we're just letting them go. I mean, we've got some good programs that do needs assessments on these people to find them ways to divert them, to be, I mean, look at the community work program on here, that's something to tone with it. Two hundred and seventy-one participants, seven thousand one hundred and one community service hours completed since August twenty eighteen. That's people that just chose, they were able to work off the hours instead of doing it in jail. And these are some good programs that are doing some good, so.
Do we use the four H program in the county, like the young adults or anything for diversion? Because those are some pretty good programs.
Not that I'm aware of Deb, there could be, you know, we've got, as far as down at the fairgrounds, we utilize work release for the inmates to come down and do work at the, at the fairgrounds, which are, a good friend of mine just took over maintenance down there, our partner, John Hart, and he loves that part of it too, so.
I just think if we don't have to reinvent the wheel and you have programs down there, we could probably add to it and then actually add to their programs based on.
Some of those hours could be down there.
Yep.
I think this is, this is a good point, that, you know, the things that go on at the care campus through the, through Berry, through the Sheriff's Office, through the State's Attorney's Office, Public Defender's Office, this is a constant work in progress. It's constantly being massaged and changed to fit the needs of what's happening at the time. It's not rigid programs that are established there. So I think anytime we have ideas of where else it could be utilized, just like Commissioner Hadcock now suggested, it's a good thing to bring to their attention that that may be a possibility because we know that we have issues or where people can be dealt with in a different manner and for different reasons. So I think anytime anybody comes up with an idea of how better to utilize and make it, essentially what we're doing is trying to make a healthier community altogether.
And basically, Gary, utilizing city folk that aren't used to anything to do with ag and training them and it makes it a little bit more interesting. And then they're also giving them skills, they're not just having them do work release or whatever, they're actually giving them skills like different cooking and sewing and speaking and all those things that basically are all-in-one programs that you could go to, you don't have to go to three different areas, you could do five different things there for diversion and learn some interesting things that are life skills. That's what I like, the four H program, most of the programs that I've seen for diversion because there's such a variety of stuff that you can learn and they're actually life skills, they're not just, you know, one certain thing.
I, I, I have to give the Board an apology because I had never, you know, I've gotten on the MacArthur and I haven't really given reports. We got Liz to come in and do one and the sheriff has done one now and then, but I haven't really, this is what I should be doing, when these come out, kind of highlight some stuff as a report to you guys so we can have these discussions because, you know, I'm human, I get a lot of paperwork and I just glance and sometimes don't, you know, look at them real hard, but this month I thought, man, these guys are really, it was close to the end of the year and this is what the reports are, and I thought it was pretty amazing, we needed to kind of go over it a little bit, so. I'll do a better job of giving better, more, more reports.
Very good.
Okay, I think everybody has talked on the areas of issue that I had, I didn't have any other scheduled meetings. So we'll move on to the approval of the vouchers.
Come on, second.
I got a motion and a second to approve vouchers in the amount of one million three hundred and fifty-four thousand thirty-four dollars and five cents. All those in favor indicate by voting aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Don't see anybody from the public, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring something on behalf of someone for the, for the public. They wanted us to at least, wanted me to at least address it here for at least a first time before you guys. They wanted to stay anonymous and we can talk about that differently if you want, but Gary, you're familiar, you and I both got called by the same individual that one of this brought up. An individual lives in, in the valley and they're concerned about fireworks in the valley. And so she's called legislators and she um, she's called legislators and she's called, uh, me and Gary, and we've had some phone calls with her and, and with law enforcement. Uh, so just wanna bring that to, um, to Aliyah's attention, that we might hear some more from her or from that individual. And, um, uh, she wants us to fix the problem and I'll just kinda give you an idea of what she would like us to do. Uh, and it has to do with creating a, a specific area to, um, set off fireworks. So that was her concern. She wanted to relay that to us, but she didn't want, that individual did not wanna come forward, so.
Travis, I think I know who you're talking about, and if you talk to Jerome Harvey, he will have lots of information for you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Just a, just a response. Uh, we have, me and Deb have worked hard on this two years ago, three years ago, meeting with the city county fire. Uh, so it, it's not like it's something, uh, we've worked a lot of different. It doesn't need area, sounds like an easy idea. Start talking about some of the, the risks and, and insurance policies and type of that stuff. I mean, so I appreciate you bringing that forward, but we can definitely have the discussions off the board or off the dais of where we ban them, how we got there and where we're at now.
Those ideas are, uh, Jerome's heard them all. And then, um, that way when they have the ideas, I think she could answer all those questions now, cause, um, we beat it to death. But you never know, you might have a different solution.
Yeah.
Okay. I got a question for Travis.
Yes, sir.
Cause I don't live, I live in the hills. You cannot have fireworks in the hills, period. But
Right.
do they do it out by New Wonderwood?
We shoot them off in New Wonderwood. So, yes, we do.
Probably got some big ones.
Um, yeah, it's a good place to shoot big ones out there. We shoot them off out there, so yeah.
I'll have to go to New Wonderwood next Fourth of July.
You can come out there and bring some of those mortars and shoot them off at our place. We got a lot of area.
You can't shoot a firecracker off at the lake.
I have a motion to go to executive session for personnel issues. I got a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's B twenty-five dash two dash one.
Okay. I would, uh,
Move.
take a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Sandy, you're up.
Sandy Sortland, HR Generalist. Uh, we have two motions from the Public Defender's Office. The first one moved to approve that Matt Rapald be placed at the DBM pay grade as a C forty-four, step five, with an hourly rate of thirty-seven ninety-three, effective January tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Your motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner LaCroy, Commissioner Roskine, motion and second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, second motion is to approve that Susan Goodhue be placed on the DBM pay grade as a B twenty-three, step five, with an hourly rate of twenty-two forty-six, effective January tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Move for approval.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, move for Pennington County Sheriff's Office, request that following three employees be moved on the twenty twenty-one wage scale, effective January tenth, twenty twenty-one. Corporal Eric Lindsay, currently being thirty-two, step twelve, thirty-one sixty to sergeant at B thirty-two, step one, thirty-two thirty-nine. Corporal Lauren Geary, currently at B thirty-two, step six, twenty-nine oh nine, to sergeant at B thirty-two, step eight, twenty-nine eighty-three per hour. And Corporal Philip Rivera, Jr., currently at B thirty-two, step one, twenty-five seventy-four, to sergeant at B thirty-two, step three, twenty-six eighty-one per hour.
Move for approval.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, second one for Pennington County Sheriff's Office, request to adjust, adjust the following four employees on the pay scale to a B thirty-one, step seven, twenty-six thirty-six per hour, effective January tenth, twenty twenty-one. This provides them credit for service without impacting those hired before them. Deputy Sheriff Brandon Ackley, Deputy Sheriff Christina Van Loon, Deputy Sheriff John Edwards, Correctional Officer Trevor Grube.
Move to prove.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's it. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner LaCroy to adjourn and a second. Commissioner Lassiter, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. We're done.